This meeting is being recorded.
If we can have everybody mute, that'd be great. Besides the mayor at this time. Mayor, you good? Whenever you're ready.
All right, I was just waiting for six. All right, here we go. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our January twenty-four, twenty-twenty-three town workshop for the town of Windermere. This is on the five hundred block of downtown Progress and Update Public Meeting. We have all of our council members in attendance, and if you will join me with the pledge, please. Hopefully, Bill has his flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. What I'd like to do at this point is, I know we'll have several folks who do want to offer public comment, but I believe it would probably be in everyone's best interest if we go ahead and hear the presentations first, then we can offer comments and possibly get some things answered during those presentations as well. As long as there's no objection from council, that's the direction that we'll go. Council, any issues with that?
None here.
All right, seeing none, then I will turn this over for our Windermere Downtown Property final engineering plan. We'll turn this over to our planner, Brad Cornelius.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, as the mayor said, I'm Brad Cornelius, way trim, serving as your contracted town planner. So I have a short PowerPoint tonight, and it is short. Just I want to just kind of let everybody know how we got where we are today, where this would go as we move forward, and then also go over some issues that we've identified with some of the materials you have this evening. I don't, just so everyone knows, I don't have all the plans and what I'm going to show you this evening. I'm just going to talk about specific points, but we do have them available if needed, and I'm sure the applicant has everything as well. So let's kind of give you just a quick overview of what I'm going to do. So, Robert, next, please. And actually, this is your third workshop. As you remember, this you had two, and this is your third one this evening. So again, just everybody knows where this is, northeast corner of Main and Sixth, and nothing's changed in terms of that. It's two, a little bit over two acres, and owners are still downtown Windermere Properties LLC. Next, please. So here's the process, just so everyone, you know, where where we are, and kind of following along on this little train. This actually started back in twenty nineteen with the pre-application meeting about the process. In twenty twenty, we did the conceptual plan review, working with the Development Review Board. And then, as you all may recall, in twenty twenty-one is when the preliminary development plan came to the town council that was approved by the town council with an ordinance that had conditions related to the project and also a concept plan that, as they move forward, they need to be consistent with for that. So that occurred in June of twenty twenty-one. And so where we are today, which is where we were in our two previous meetings workshops, is we're at the final engineering plan. So this is the final step of the process, where now the applicant is putting together their final engineering, their final construction plans for the project, and that's what we're looking at now. And now they're still in the process of putting them together. So as I say, the final engineering plans are not final yet. They're still in process, and that's why we're having these workshops to have these discussions as it goes through the process of getting developed. What will happen, though, is when those engineering plans are completed, then they will come through a separate public hearing process with your Development Review Board, where they will review them and provide a recommendation. And then it will come to you, the town council, for your review and decision on approval or denial, or whatever you would wish to do with it. So there is another process, you know, that will still go forward with public hearings that we'll be noticing. And actually, for that process, our noticing is larger. We actually have to put signs on the property, so there's actually a larger noticing with that. So that's where this is going. So where we've been, where we are, and that's where this would go if, as this moves forward. So that's that quick overview. Robert, next, please. So again, just, these are just little reminders for everyone. So this is a planned unit development. This is required under your comprehensive plan. So any development within your downtown district, when your overlay district, it's required when new development comes in, it has to go through a PUD, and the reason for that is it allows for this process where there's a lot of discussion and interaction as that project moves forward. So that is why it is in this process. So when you do this, though, you have, the development has to move forward with development consistent with what's approved under the PUD, which is what's happening here. So again, as I said earlier, in June of twenty twenty-one, the town council approved ordinance twenty-two-one oh one, which approved the PUD rezoning with the conditions and requirements in general master plan. So it has to move forward consistent with all those approvals that occurred. Also, it has to be consistent with your, you know, your general zoning code, where it's not overridden by the PUD, your comprehensive plan. And then here also, important for people to understand, also consistent with your town center design guidelines that are in place here in the town of Windermere. And they were adopted in two thousand and four, but they are within your, adopted through your land development code. And in that, those standards, that's where it provides for the requirement for building location, park, where the building and parking locations are, the buffering, parking requirements, what the facade will look like, some landscaping. So there's a lot of design elements to, so there's a lot of pieces that they need as they move forward. Next, please, Robert. And this is one last reminder before we get into what's the new things. Again, this is the downtown master plan, and what's outlined or circled in the blue, this is the property that's being considered for development. So and as you can see, what's important when this was adopted, and many of you were around and part of that process, you know, the front of these, this property that fronts Main, that's where the building has to go there. And then on the back side, which fronts on Oakdale, that's the parking area and the parking zone with no buildings. So they have to respect, they have to meet that, and that's what they're doing. The other important part about this is the buffer requirement, which is the buffer here around the perimeter, particularly here along Oakdale and Sixth, which, and then also the requirement for a right-in, right-out only on East Sixth Avenue here. So those are the constraints that they have to meet and be consistent with under your master plan. The other part I do want to point off out on this slide, because I know this will be a point of discussion, is you can see here on the right side where it does talk about the parking requirements. So in your design standards, it has its own parking requirements outside of what you have in your standard land development code. So, and this is how the town adopted this. So you're at four spaces per thousand square feet, not dependent on the use type, just on the square footage of the development. Or the town council could reduce it to three and a half spaces per thousand based on you find that there's a need to do that to protect trees, and that's what's happening, and that's why you reduce it to three and a half. So I did, I do want to point that out. That's where those numbers are coming from. There's, that's where the requirements are coming from for the parking, which has been adopted by the town. Next, please. There were the conditions. I don't, I'm not going to list all of them, but what they addressed many items, and we, those are what we're checking them against as we review this and as we present it to you, is they have, there is a requirement for them to have mitigation agreements for their transportation, for utilities that are part of final development plan. I will talk about that here later in the presentation. In terms of the development plan itself, there is an emphasis on these require, on these conditions that the council put on this project on tree protection and mitigation, and the proper landscaping, the stormwater management, you know, making sure this is designed compliant with what the town wants in the design district in your downtown, and also the buffering to those surrounding properties. So there's many conditions within this ordinance that address all of those items. If this moves forward, there's also requirements in that ordinance on how they manage construction, you know, to minimize the impact on the surrounding properties if this does go forward. Finally, also, the land uses within here, they have to be consistent with what's allowed in your district. So which, the uses that are being proposed at this point are compliant with that. And finally, it does require these workshops that we're going through now. So that's just an overview of the requirements of this PUD. Next, please. So this is the plan, the landscape plan, site plan that they submitted for tonight's public workshop. Like I said, it was not a full submittal of the full engineering plans. This was specifically on issues that I know the developer was interested in discussing with the town council and the public this evening. So what we have on the plan is consistent, what pretty, what you've seen previously. They did reduce, as we spoke about at the last workshop, what they were permitted to have in terms of square footage. They were permitted to be at twenty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet, and they're actually at seven thousand, and I don't remember the, or I'm sorry, they're at nineteen thousand in some square feet. So they're about two thousand square feet less than what they were originally approved for. So they are within those limitations. Again, this, the footprint that you see has not changed from what you saw at your last workshop. The, the, the one thing you are seeing here that I don't think we had a workshop is the current version of their proposal landscape plan that shows the proposed landscaping. But then there, within the full plan set, which is part of your agenda packet, and is available on the town's website, there's more detail about these plants and the types, and I'm sure the applicant can speak more to it when they, when they present. So that's what you're seeing is what the proposing, as well as the buffer there along Oakdale and the trees around it. You can see in the corner there on the northwest or east corner, the little cutout, that was something that came through the discussions with the tree board about leaving that as open, because it's really not need for the project, and leave that as an open space in the corner, and that's what they are showing here within their plan. So again, that's been part of their, their plans here for a few months now. So that's what you have. That's the site plan. So what I do wanted to speak about here, I'll start speaking about some of the comments that we had from the submittal. So this submittal was made to the town in November, and we sent our comments to the applicant beginning of December. And I did, our full comments are part of the agenda packet. The email is so, it is public, and everything's there. So the parking is, we know, is an issue. So as I said earlier, your requirements are four, three and a half. Is that your discretion on the three and a half if you find it that this needed to protect the trees? They, they are providing on the plan that we have in front of us now sixty-seven spaces onsite. These are all onsite. If you maintain the requirement of four, they would be required based on the square footage, seventy-nine spaces, which would make them twelve spaces short of the requirement. If the town council would accept a three and a half per thousand based on tree protection, then it would require sixty-nine, and they would be too short. So that's where they are with the parking. I know there, again, parking is an issue here. So it does tie to tree protection. It ties to the size of the buildings. And as I presented previously, your code does provide another alternative dealing when there's a shortage. But again, this is completely at the town council's discretion. If you want to allow for this to happen, is, there is a provision in your code that allows someone to pay a fee to the town, a mitigation fee, to make up for the spaces that they are short on the requirement based on a cost that the town determines on a per-space cost. So there is a procedure in place, but again, that's not mandatory. That's at the town council's discretion if you'd want to provide for that or not. So that was a, that I wanted to address this at this point. Next, please, Robert. One of the other points that came or issues that came up at our last workshop was about the truck routing through the property and on to East Fifth Avenue. As I said earlier, the requirement in your, your downtown master plan is that access on East Sixth Avenue can only be right in, right out. So that then requires that cross through the property. What was presented at the last workshop, it only brought the, the truck routing, or I'll call it, or pathing to the, basically to the edge of the property, didn't bring it all the way down. That was one of the requests, was to bring the truck pathing all the way down East Fifth Avenue and into the roundabout just to see how that would interface. So that is what was presented. On the bottom of that diagram, you can see the size of the truck that was used. It was not a small truck. It is a large truck. I think it was a thirty-three-foot trailer. They use it. So they did use a large, relatively large truck for this pathing. But as you see in our comments, and we did review this with your public works director and with John, these concerns is, we are concerned, because as we look at this, we see the pathing come awful close up onto the curbing there on the north side of East Fifth Avenue. And it's, it's very, it's very tight. We're concerned that that may, you know, interfere with the curbing. There are, there is a drainage inlet there, right there on the edge. We're concerned about impacts to that. So we're concerned about that, that tightness, how tight that comes in. Related to that is, as you all know, the trees that are there, and those are the pictures that you see on there, on that, I put those on there. That was also provided to the applicant in my comments, just to show, you know, those trees, as you all, you know, you're there, are fair, are pretty close to that curve. And so we're concerned about the truck impacts potentially not on curve, but the, the trees. So we raise that concern and that issue. Also, you can see, given that roundabout, the size of the roundabout and the truck, you know, the trucks can only track to the north when they get there. Another comment we brought up was, how does that get controlled? So I did have conversations with, with the applicant and their engineer, Mr. Geiger. And, you know, Mr. Geiger said they would address this with town council tonight. They didn't provide really any additional information to present to you, but I know this will be, I believe this will be a point that I will discuss with you, the, what they think about this issue. But we did raise this as an issue that needs to be addressed. And that's the truck pathing. Next, please. This shows the walls. I don't have all the images. So what they provided, some rendering to show the walls, proposed walls, is the reason why I put these two here. One of the issues that have come up, the one on the upper left is the proposed wall along East Sixth Avenue. That would be towards the, the homes on the other side. It's proposed at three feet. I, I do understand, you know, through the previous discussions with the tree board, and I believe also possibly the town council, that was something that was discussed, was having a lower wall on Sixth Avenue, and that's why they did what they put there. However, we, I did receive some feedback from the residents on the other side of East Sixth Avenue on Oakdale that were concerned about that, because that would, the concern about the impact to them with headlights and things over the wall. So what, what I had in my comment is that, you know, your, your design guidelines do require a six-foot wall along East Sixth Avenue. So I just thought that was important for me to say that, let town council know that, that that is a requirement of your, your guidelines of your standards. So that, so it should be six based on your standards, but I do understand why they showed it three, but six is what you have required. The other image on the bottom right, it's not a great one, but it shows it roughly along Oakdale. Again, on there, they are showing a six-foot wall with the landscaping on the outside. And that is, that does meet the requirement in terms of the height of the wall and the, the type of the wall. The condition, though, you do have in your PUD, and they have done this to some degree, allows some flexibility in terms of how that wall is installed. You know, it doesn't have to be a straight wall. It can have, which it does, it can go in, it can, it can wave, be wavy to minimize impact to trees and other plant along that wall. So as you see on their wall, that it is somewhat what they are doing with the wall there. Next, next, please, Robert. So the, the last piece to go over with you all this evening is when I talked about mitigation early on. So we have looked at this, working with Robert and Tanya and John. We did review this. So there's three pieces to this. One is there's a requirement in the PUD approval that they have to provide a, a share of the improvement to a proposed improvement to the roundabout at Sixth and Main Street. So what we did was, we looked at the previous costs that were estimates that were, were, were put together for that project, and then we actually grew it based on inflation rates and looked at their percentage relationship to traffic of how much they would, they would be part of the overall traffic going through that, and the twenty thousand dollar was the number or the fee or mitigation payment that we came out with for that. We also, part of your, your requirements for this is they do have to place a pedestrian signal at East and, at East Sixth Avenue in Oakdale. So we don't have a cost for that quite yet, but that would be required for them to do. And we also put in there, and there may be needs for some type of improvements east, East Fifth Avenue. We don't know that yet. So that would be something to be determined as this moves forward. But those are what we're looking at, transportation. I will say, we did provide this to the applicant. I believe we did, we didn't get any negative response to it. I think they, they're okay with what we've presented so far in terms of that. There's still more work to be done, but that's, at this point, I don't, I think we're okay in terms of working with the applicant. But again, ultimately, it's up to the town council to make that determination, what you think is appropriate. With tree mitigation, there will be tree mitigation fee at the, once we have a final plan where we know what that final tree count is and what should, needs to be mitigated for. So that will occur. We don't have that detail yet to be able to say what that would be. But that will be calculated before this would come back for the actual hearings through the Development Review Board and the town council. So that's something else that is there. And I won't, and as I previously talked about, also your discretion, if you would, if you would provide the opportunity for parking in lieu, or a fee in lieu of parking, that would be an additional fee. So we have begun those calculations, discussions, and when this comes back through hearings, you know, they'll, they'll have, be more final for your consideration as this move forward. So tho, those are the main issues I wanted to go over with you all. Again, I don't have all the plan sets in here. Those are the main pieces of concern that we had in our review that you had seen. I do also just want to say publicly, as everyone is aware, we did receive four emails earlier today from different residents. I'm not going to read them, but I do want to just announce them, so they do recognize that we did receive them. And so also, they know we did forward them to the applicant as well as to the mayor and the town council, so they are aware. But Ms. Lavina Williams sent us an email this morning with concerns about parking. Elena La Rochelle, who lives across Oakdale from this property, sent an email of concerns about the buffering in front of her home, as well as potential light impacts to her home. Renita Ada, she sent an email about concerns about parking and potential outdoor display. And Vicky Hurst sent an email with comments about trees and tree protection. So those are the emails we had, we received this morning. We did forward them to the council, the mayor, and to the applicant. And just so everyone is aware that we did move those on. That is my short presentation. I mean, if you have any questions with me, what I've presented so far, happy to answer them, or anything after the applicant.
Thank you, Brad. I think that there's likely a few questions from council, probably at this juncture. We'll address those, then we'll move on with the presentation from the applicant and from there to any questions for the applicant, then on to public comment. So just a couple things that I was making note of. So obviously, we have the parking challenge. But I think one of my bigger concerns is, and I, this is a little, going to be a little difficult, because I'm not asking you to pass judgment on anything. What I'm asking, do, do we have everything that we should have in the packet that we're seeing tonight that we would expect for a, for a project at this stage?
For the, Mayor, I, I believe where we are at this stage, because what, how this is, is worked its way through your workshops, we, it's been kind of focused on the different parts of it and pieces of it. So, you know, for the discussion today, I, but I do hear what you're saying, and I, my thought would be there in that question is, it would probably be very helpful to have the full plan set of everything one last time before it does go into the public hearing process for another look by the council. But that's my thought for it. So I think for this evening, and I think the purpose for this evening, I think you have, but it may leave openings in need for another workshop.
Agreed. And I, I, you know, what I'm trying to avoid is when we don't have all the information, it, it leaves room for doubt. It leaves room for people to have their own interpretation of things. And I want to make sure that, that we have all the facts available to council, all the facts available to the public. So we are able to, you know, kind of know what we're going to get before we start moving bricks. And so I also would like a little bit more discussion on the egress and, and the, the outflow for the truck, because I do want to make sure that we're not, you know, damaging the infrastructure that we have, and we, you know, that we have already paid for. I want to make sure that, that we're able to, to either modify that, so it, it does not continue to cause a problem or, you know, get degraded over time just from the wear and tear of the, the different trucks, especially since we are talking about some possible tenants that may have maybe a little bit more truck traffic than we would typically expect for some of the applications that are there now. So, so talk about those a little bit more. With that, I'll, I'll turn it over to council for additional questions to Brad.
I'll go first.
Oh, hey, I'm sorry. I didn't see the.
Do we have?
Oh, sorry. Possible person down it. I saw his hand as well.
I didn't see the hands. Go ahead.
So Brad, to kind of follow up on the, the mayor's question, when would we expect to have the other detailed requirements that you, that in the letter that you sent, within the package, there are several deficiencies. You know, the architectural standard signage, civil site, all of that is not included in this, in this package. When would you expect to see all of that? Because obviously, that's very pertinent to all the decisions going forward. Architectural standard, does it or doesn't meet the town code requirements? Civil site, does this, where's the stormwater retention, everything going, septic design, things like that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So I'll take a little bit one at a time on, on your question. So in terms of the building style, we do have information submitted for tonight, for today with elevations, and we did provide in your packet, they did have their architect. I believe the architect's online with, with them as well tonight. His analysis of the compliance with the design standards in our review, we think they are compliant. But, so we do have that part. Now, we don't have the signage detail. That's not yet. We just have the, the squares. So that would come, but so you do have some of it. But yes, as you said, Councilmember David, yeah, we don't, at this point, we don't have any additional civil pieces of this, the stormwater, the, the other civil hard engineering. So that one hundred percent has to be fully done and reviewed by, you know, the town staff and us before it would go to the DRB and before we come to town council through your formal hearing process. So definitely there. But I don't know that anybody wants to wait till then to do that. But you will absolutely have it at that point, because they have to have it at that point. Because what happens in your, the way your code works, which is a little bit unique, once with this final engineering plan that would come to you in the hearing process, if you approve it at, at your hearing, that's their approval to, from the town to start site construction, site work. That's exactly how the Windermere Brewery happened as well, is that last approval that the council would provide through this process is your approval on the construction plan. So you will see the hundred percent construction plan before you will approve anything. It's just how soon before that time when they have to do it, we'll see. They did present that information early on at the first public, at the first workshop, but it was pretty early. So we haven't seen any more summits on that since then on. So we haven't seen any more summits on that since then on that part of this project.
Yeah, that that's my concern, Brad, is it was very early and there is a lot of comments with respect to those those items on this on the civil civil package. So that's what seeing updates on that.
Yes, I can't. I can't tell you. We have I've had in my engineering, we've had conversations with Mr. Geiger, the the engineer for the project. So I do know he's they're working on it. It's moving forward. We've had discussions about stormwater and the concerns that we've been raised. We just haven't seen the plans revisions yet based on those discussions. So I do know it is being worked on and Yes, sir.
Hey, yeah, no, we appreciate that. And I think that it's it's good that it's being worked on, but I think that we want to be cautious about how far we get the cart ahead of the horse if we don't have all the information that we need to have. For for a couple of reasons. Number one, because I I just don't it it doesn't make any of us feel very comfortable. The other piece to it is that I also want to make sure that we avoid you know, a deluge of information at the end that then leaves people feeling like they didn't get the opportunity to provide input. And, you know, we get into 11th hour changes and and those sort of things that are generally not necessarily productive for a a good project. So with with that comment, I'll move on to Councilperson Martini. You're muted, Bill. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I I concur with the the comment with your comments and also Councilman Davids. I think there's a a lot more information that needs to be shared. So that we can move forward with this cautiously and appropriately. That said, a couple of things, I I know we had discussed the six foot wall versus three foot wall in front of the property on Sixth Avenue. And I've also had discussions with some of the neighbors on Oakdale Street. And I think the the initial discussion for reducing it to three feet was to avoid sort of a, you know, a boxed in or a compound looking development to to give it a little more openness on the front. However, I do think it may be detrimental to those residents on Oakdale Street with the parking situation and the headlights and that type of thing. So I, you know, I I I'm not I'm not really married to the to the idea of a three foot wall. And six foot would be fine. Obviously, we're going to have landscape in front of either one. So it really wouldn't make much of a difference, but I I wouldn't want to put that burden on the residents necessarily. So also, as far as the trucks go, is there going to be a maximum size of truck? Trailer combination that would be allowed to route through there? And if the trucks are only allowed to make a right turn at that traffic circle, we need to put some guidelines in place to make sure that they don't, then again, make a right turn onto Third or Second Avenue to to get back going the other way through town. Like, we don't want them, you know, circling around the block to come out on Sixth in order to go east on Sixth. We need to make sure that that's crystal clear that that's not going to be allowed also. And and one quick question about the overall site layout, Brad, maybe you can scroll back to the image that showed the site on keep going on in relation to the other buildings on the block. Such as the red brick building. I don't know if that's on, keep going.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's it's there. It's the building to the to the north of the site.
So the question I have is, there's been some talk, especially with the tree board about the location of the building and the and the fact that it's pushed out to the very edges limits of the property line. And and I understand that that's from the town master plan from 20 years ago. And I think everybody's a little nervous about that that corner that's right by the traffic circle. But it looks like on on one of these plans in relation to the like the red brick building and the and the other buildings that are further north that are this proposed site plan. Looks like, in my opinion, from from where I saw the stakes, it looks like it's going to be further out towards the street. But on one of these one of these diagrams, it looks like it's like the other buildings are further out toward the street. Are they all going to be in the same line as far as you know, distance from the front of the building to the street itself?
As as it shows on the site plan, we you have before you, yes, they're they're in line with each other, both buildings. So they'd be the same distance off of Main Street.
But I mean, in in relation, this is probably not, I don't think this is
in relation to the to the other.
In relation to the other buildings, it it doesn't look like they're in the right right place.
Well, I I will say the other buildings were built prior to your design guidelines coming in place. So yeah, I mean, they're they're in front of the brick building. I haven't actually looked too too hard on that part.
Okay.
With it, so.
I'll I'll make I'll make a note. I'll make a note on the on the diagram that I'm talking about and I'll send it to you.
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And then, of course, the other thing obviously is our concern, overall concern with the trees. Tree canopy, tree protection, especially the large patio tree. There's an awful lot of concern about that that patio tree and the fact that the applicant is supposed to be using IS ISA standards to to protect these trees. And they they have been very cooperative with with the tree board in making sure that they retain the maximum amount of trees. They really have gone overboard to to meet with us and to reduce the number of trees and work around the trees. So we're thankful for that. And and we look forward to continuing that level of cooperation until this project is complete. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Councilperson Martini, are you are you and I'll ask you to speak for the tree board just a little bit here. Are are we pleased where we're at in terms of the 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 canopy and and the trees and location of the trees being preserved?
Yeah, we've talked about every single tree numerous times. We've met with the the applicant and their representatives. We've gone back and forth quite a lot. There are a few that are concerning. Obviously, the big patio tree. And some some of the other heritage oaks to make sure that the construction, you know, that these things don't die off in three or four years because the construction was not you know, or possibly damaged the roots and that type of thing. So that's that's a huge concern going forward. We do have an arborist that we've contracted with to help us determine these types of things. There are some trees, some big oak trees on one of the neighboring properties, which we're also concerned about the the impact of the construction for that. So there's the jury's still out as far as tree board goes. We're not 100% comfortable with everything. But like I said, the applicant and their reps have been very cooperative and willing to listen and talk and meet with us to to go over those concerns and to try and mitigate them.
Good. Mayor, related to the tree board, one of the requirements of the PUD is that before this would come to the public hearing with the Development Review Board and with you with town council, they are charged to review this project and provide the DRB and town council with a recommendation about the project related to the tree protection, tree mitigation and landscape plan and the wall and the buffering. So you will be getting a formal recommendation through the tree board as this process, if this process moves through the public hearings as part of that.
Thanks, Brad. I, yeah, I just kind of wanted to get a little temperature check on on how that was going because that can be, you know, it's been a big point of discussion and there's been a lot of emphasis and effort put into that. And and I'm glad to see that everyone is, you know, still communicating, we're still making progress, we're you know, I can tell from the the plans that, you know, this is everybody's really concentrating and thinking about that as well. I do want to make a quick announcement that I know that we 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 held public comment so we could get council questions done, then get both pieces of the presentation. And then we will allow for all public comment. So anyone who does wish to speak tonight, we will be here until we hear from from every every person. I see 58 participants on tonight. So that's two big meetings in a row. These are two big important things and we'll stay as long as it takes to get all the public comment and make sure that everyone is heard. Councilperson Rose, your hands up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Brad, I have two questions. The first one is, does the setback on the buildings meet our design code?
Yes, yes, yes. Your design code does call for them to come up to the the property lines. It basically calls it's a build to line to push them up to the front of the property.
So both Sixth Street and Main Street, the traffic, that's all meets our code. The second one I have is is there going to be an updated traffic study? And if so, when?
No. So far, everything that has been discussed in terms of their use types is consistent with the analysis that was done in terms of the the traffic. And actually, the traffic study that was previously done had 2,000 additional square feet of development that's actually not occurring. So at this point, at least from the code perspective, there's not a trigger that I that's in there to say they would need to update that. But where we have where we have the concern about the impact of the truck traffic to be coming on East Fifth, that is a separate issue of overall traffic. The other part of that discussion is that as when they did that study and it was requirement of this project is the right turn lane on East Sixth Avenue coming into the project. That was a result of the traffic study that was already done showing that there was a need to put that in to get cars out of the queue that queues up there at the roundabout and on to the project. So there's that's that's why it is. So that's answer the traffic. So yeah, there's not a trigger for it. And there are, there's already a requirement for mitigation there with the right turn lane.
Okay, so with the right turn lane, then the building sets back from that. So in other words, the road, the building is probably about in the same spot it is now, but it'll be taller.
Building now set a little bit back further, I would say.
Even with the added lane. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, because, yeah, actually, the lane is coming on off of their property and it really, it's on the back half of the property primarily where the the house is with the fence.
That's primary. Okay. And and the last thing, I do have another one. Am I and and I believe you've answered this, the sewers and the stormwater engineering that is still to come, correct?
That's in process, right. They right, they'll have onsite septic. And what what you see on your plan tonight is in that corner, the northeast corner on the other side of the cutout, that is the septic drain field. And then they are gonna, right now, and their proposal is to have their stormwater in ground. Stormwater, but that that's still in process. Then that is correct.
Okay, and they have city water, so it's not an issue.
They have city water. That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilperson Rose. Brad, how how close to the lane of traffic is the corner of that building one? There's no, I don't see any measurements on the drawings, but can you ballpark that for me?
From the actual travel lane?
Yeah.
I would hate to guess on that, Mayor. I don't have that. I can probably
Maybe we can guess. Yeah, maybe we can guess where tonight, not right this second, but at some point.
I mean, and then I I'm going to say, and Marcus probably knows, Mr. Geiger, then you probably know better than I do. I'm going to say somewhere maybe between eight and 10 feet. But one of the points I do want to bring up because I understand why the question is there. You know, in terms of like visual and site visual issues related to that, because this is a urban I shouldn't say urban, it's a downtown district there. You know, in the way the roundabout operates, you know, the in the way your code was set up for this property, that's that's the way it looks to do it. You know, our engineer has looked at it and he didn't see that there would be a potential issue with, you know, a visual and and that kind of thing. But I do understand the concern.
It just, I, you know, it, I think it begs the question just from the drawings. But again, you know, that's why we have you guys to check sightlines. I was thinking not only sightlines, but just from the perspective of of, you know, kids and and people, pets, you know, being really close there. But, you know, I just, I just want, I think it's in everybody's mind. So maybe if we can look at that a little bit and and make sure, you know, 10 feet is a lot different than five feet. You know, it's just, it's a little hard to draw from the drawing. So
potentially, if if there is an improvement to the roundabout, what the concept on that was is the roundabout there would shift to the west, away from the corner, which would provide some more separation.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. And that's that's a good point as well. Any additional comments, questions or concerns for Brad from council at this point?
Yeah, just to jump in on your point there, Mayor, there is a sidewalk that wraps around that that corner. And, you know, like you said, there will be people biking and walking and that type of thing. So that that is a a concern. I believe that that corner is staked. It was previously, I don't know if it's still out there, but if people want to go out and take a look, they can see for themselves where the corner should be unless the stake has been moved again. So Brad, one other question about, is there a side setback for building two? I guess that would be the north side.
Within your within your downtown district, it's zero setback lot line, the lot line. So because the the diet, the idea within your district is to have that line of buildings, you know, to to create that sense of place kind of thing. So no, there's no side setback requirements within this district.
Yeah, okay, understood. And and the reason I ask is because the the trees that I on the neighboring property that I mentioned before are literally right on or just just inches across from that line. And they're quite sizable oak trees. And so I don't know if you know, I I know there's been some discussion about about trying to work around that and save those. So I would assume that any stormwater or rainwater, whatever that that comes off building two would have to be captured and redirected and not on to the neighbor's property, correct?
Correct, right. And the general standard is you can increase the flow and rate offside of your property. So right, they would have to maintain it and not increase it and make it worse offsite. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brad. Thank you, council. Certainly appreciate all the input. I believe from here and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe from here, we're going to move to the applicant's presentation. Is that correct, Robert?
Yes, sir. What I'll have to do is I'll stop share and then whomever from the applicant that is going to present, I will allow them to share their screen. So let's let me know when you're queued up and ready to go.
Okay. And while you guys are doing that, what we will do just again, so everybody knows the kind of the how we're going to work through this, we'll we'll hear from the applicant. Again, any questions, comments or concerns from council? We want to deal with those because we don't we don't have the opportunity to speak to each other like, you know, in any other setting than this. So I want to make sure that we methodically address all those issues that everyone's been getting input on from from the public. And then immediately after that, we will move to public input. And again, everyone who wishes to comment will will be heard this evening 100%. Okay.
Mayor, real quick, just I did measure that measurement for you. What what I come up with is approximately 17 feet from the corner of that building to the pavement of the roundabout at the closest point.
Great. Yeah, that that's that that's much better than what it kind of just looks like. It's it's a little difficult to tell. I'm looking at this this picture here and this is a, this gives you a little bit. But you know, a much better kind of idea of what it will look like.
Yes, sir.
And so we are unmuted.
Okay. Are we ready to go?
All right.
Can everybody hear us? All right, we're sitting a little bit back from our microphone.
Yes, if you can move the microphone a little closer, that'd be great.
You might need to sit closer. When you move that, it's going to be a challenge.
Is it this?
Room is fitting. Can you see it's all right?
We can hear you.
All right. How's that? All right, I'm just gonna have to talk louder because it's our camera and our microphone at the same time. So go ahead and bring that. That you can get rid of that. All right. Can everybody see us, our, uh, our screen? Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. So, um, this is Brett Dargis. I'm here with Keith Silverman. We're with Bee Tree Capital. Uh, we're the development partner for the Windermere Downtown Property. Um, I think I've met most of the council members in the past, uh, uh, would have enjoyed to be there in person again, but, but, uh, you know, we can work with the virtual meetings as well. What you're looking at here is the updated rendering, uh, three dimensional rendering of the development uh, with, um, the, uh, building one uh, there, uh, on the corner, um, building two is off to the left, uh, kind of behind that station wagon that's parked there. Uh, gives you kind of a feel for the architectural style that we've gone with, um, on this property. Um, we've reduced the size of the, uh, tower on the corner. And changed some of the storefront glazing, uh, to more accurately represent, uh, the design standards of the community. We've taken off the, um, sign bands on this. There was a comment during the last meeting that, uh, the sign bands did not uh, meet the current, uh, town's sign criteria. Um, those were on there originally just for placeholders, uh, by our architect. Um, but I know it, it created some confusion with some folks. And so, um, we fully realize that we have to, um, adapt the town sign criteria to the development. Um, but signs typically will have the program put together, but it's going to reflect the town's sign criteria. Um, and then the tenants that end up coming into the facility will, will, uh, be making application for signs themselves. Uh, that will have to reflect those design standards. So, but what we wanted to do was kind of clean up the, the facade a little bit so that you could see the, uh, exterior, uh, materials and the canopies and roof lines and things like that. This is kind of a table of contents, sort of the outline that we're gonna go. There's our property and the location. Um, this is where we started on the property when, uh, we took over, or I guess, uh, subsequent to the approval back in two thousand nineteen. Um, and I'd go ahead, that's fine. Um, we've got six different iterations, um, that we've gone through in an effort to, uh, really to mitigate, uh, any tree damage, uh, while trying to maintain the, uh, integrity of the development. Um, go to the last one. Yes, sir. So this is what you would have seen last workshop. And then the, this is the current site. This is, this is the current site plan. Um, and this was actually completed in between, um, the last submittal to, uh, Brad and, uh, some tweaks that we've made to it to, uh, additionally accommodate some parking situations. So we, we've, we've, uh, brought a couple of more parking spaces on the property by moving the, uh, underground tank. So we're now at sixty nine parking spaces, which we hit three point five two spaces per thousand square feet of development. The development itself is still the same square footage that we submitted it during our last one. We moved the, uh, the wall slightly farther from these trees, uh, since last time. So the right away trees have a little bit better buffer. Um, we, and that's sort of been adapted. And then we did clip a little bit of the building foundations out uh, to accommodate the trees that we spoke about at the last tree board meeting. So we're gonna, there's a floating foundation sort of concept. We're gonna let the architect talk to that when we get to that point, um, regarding the, the actual design. I think I shared with the, the, at the last workshop that we were gonna design a, um, a suspended uh, foundation over the root balls of those neighbors trees so that we can protect those. Um, and, uh, he can speak to the design of that, but the architect and their, um, uh, structural engineer will be fully on board with, uh, designing a adequate, um, foundation for that building. Go to the next one. So this is the, this is the tree impact mitigation plan that we kind of finalized with the tree board after our last meeting. Um, as you can see, the circles in red are the trees that are, that are being removed. The trees in, in dark green are the onsite trees that we're saving. And then the trees in the light green are, what does that read there? They were, um, they were additional kept. So dark green is trees that the tree board specifically requested, uh, that we keep. And so we did agree, we, we designed site plan items around basically the dark greens. Um, the light greens were items that sort of were always planned to be kept, but were brought up at the last tree board meeting. Uh, so they're indicated that yes, we are keeping those. Um, the red are item, are trees that, uh, do appear on the tree survey, uh, but don't allow the site to work at all should they stay. Uh, we, we were, we did attempt to work around them, um, but there's just no way to work around the trees that are within building footprints. Um, or within, uh, the underground storage facilities. So that would be out here. So what we, what we've done in, in cooperation with the, uh, the tree board and the, our arborist is, is come up with this plan that, that, you know, we think minimizes the impact to the existing trees uh, to the greatest extent possible while allowing us to continue to develop a property. Um, Eric Hoyer, our arborist is on the line as well and can speak if, if we have questions regarding, and I know that the question was brought up about the protection of the, uh, courtyard tree. Um, as well as probably the perimeter trees with the neighbor. Um, but he can speak when people have questions about how that'll be protected, but it'll be protected both above and below ground during construction with, uh, fencing and, and fertilizer and watering. And then afterwards, uh, we've got a, a program in place to keep those trees all healthy and, and thriving. Go ahead. Actually, hold on, let's go back to, we actually go, go forward one. So this is, this is the landscape plan. Um, and it's, you know, I feel it's probably in, in pretty close to final form with the exception of a comment that was made by one of the citizens today regarding the, um, the amount of, uh, what they felt worked was blank wall, uh, along Oakdale there. What we're gonna propose to do, um, in order to, um, alleviate that problem is we've got that, that wall that's in the, in the northeast corner that makes the little jog, um, around the, uh, grassy area. Um, there's a, 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 quite a substantial amount of landscaping that's going along that wall. It'll never actually be seen because we were saving all those trees outside the property line there. So what we're gonna propose to do is remove, we'll switch out the landscape material, put that against the, uh, the, uh, uh, wall there, um, out towards the perimeter. To pretty up that area. I, I agreed when I saw the, uh, pictures that were sent that, you know, having that six foot blank wall in that area just probably didn't make any sense for us. Um, so it, you know, the, the rest of the development is going to be so nice and, and there's no reason to not have that section of the wall uh, be protected as well. We've already talked to, uh, uh, Marcus Geiger, our engineer about that, getting that onto the, uh, landscape plans when we submit for, uh, our plan review. Let's see. And I, I hate to keep chattering on you, Brett. They, the, the big reason that this area is, has less landscaping is to protect the roof, the root structure of these, these trees in particular. So that's why these. Yeah, that, that was an item that was brought up during our last walkthrough with the, uh, uh, tree board was that there are some trees along that, that, uh, east side of the property that, um, i- if we plant a, a large number of, of ground cover and shrubs around there, they're gonna necessarily affect the, uh, the health and stability of those, uh, mature trees that we have there that we're trying to save. And so we're gonna endeavor to probably keep those areas uh, empty of new landscape material, um, and, and probably mulch the area so that, um, those existing trees can, can stay healthy as well. So this is specifically our, our planning schedule. I know, uh, at the last workshop, there was discussion on, on native trees. Um, this, we did receive an updated, um, uh, tree, acceptable tree list. Uh, and Marcus will be able to answer any specific questions, uh, based on that, on landscape plan. But this does, uh, identify that they are, uh, considered to be native there for type one plants. Um, and then this is the existing trees, um, that are on, considered to be onsite and that are staked. So, uh, a quick comment about this, um, in working with the tree board, we received from, um, Susan, uh, the final list of, of, uh, requests and, and, uh, a kind of an approval, uh, list, um, which we went through and, and basically agreed to, uh, every item, but one that had to do with building setbacks, which really didn't have to do with the, uh, the landscaping or the wall or, or tree mitigation. And, um, so I, I guess in, in our mind, we are probably, um, through the review and approval process with the, uh, tree board, uh, with the exception of maybe some sort of formal letter, but, but we've agreed to, uh, in, in, again, in conjunction with our arborist who'd gone through the list and said that we can meet all those standards and requirements, um, we've agreed with all their requests. So. And that was part of the agenda packet tonight. If there's any questions that the, the requirements and our response to them. Um, I'm gonna let Marcus, we'll come back to this. We'll have Marcus cover trucker analysis.
Yeah, improving.
Thank you, guys. Um, so, oh, if you go back one. So, uh, here's, here's the truck turn, uh, analysis that we, uh, pro- provided as a part of the packet. Um, um, I, I believe it was questioned earlier by council member, uh, Martini, if there is going to be a, uh, a maximum truck size, this, this WB forty truck with the thirty three foot trailer would be the maximum size, uh, truck that we have coming through the, the site. Um, we're running this, uh, an analysis. We were looking to make sure that we were able to avoid, um, existing and proposed curbing um, as the truck moved throughout the, the site. Um, and then we also were running this to make sure that we were able to access Fifth, Fifth Avenue. I know that there is concerns that were brought up regarding when the, the, the truck would, um, exit along Fifth Avenue and then head towards the roundabout. Um, I believe somebody mentioned that the truck was, uh, running over curb. Um, but what's actually going on, uh, there is a, a long Fifth Avenue, there is, um, FF curb along there. And the truck does run over the, the gutter portion of the F curb, which is just a, a depressed area that's at, at grade with the road that, um, is actually built for, uh, vehicles to be able to run over the, the, the top of vehicles regularly do run over the, the, uh, gutter portion of F curb. Um, but at, at, at no point is this truck running over the top of curb in the public right of way or on, on the, the private site. Um, um, I believe it was also brought up that, um, the truck wouldn't be able to navigate Fifth Avenue because of the, um, trees that are currently along the edge of the travel ways there. But we, we were under, we, we believe that these trees can be limbed up as needed, um, o- 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 without damaging them. I, 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 I believe that this truck is able to access the site and still be able to progress, um, along, uh, Main Street adequately as, as designed. And then this is the, um, the fire engine routing. It's, it's a similar, uh, type of, uh, routing, uh, a smaller truck actually, but it's still able to access the site, um, the island where we are saving the trees, um, at the back of building one and two. It's able to, uh, uh, navigate around this, this, this island without running over curbs. And it's still able to access Fifth, Fifth Avenue also. If you wanna go to the next one there.
Why don't we go?
Yep, there you go.
Those, these, these photos here are a quick share just to show that we've actually got semis coming through and making that roundabout around that tree right now anyway. And, and, uh, and there's some eyes that don't currently service the site. So there are other, other users in the community have forty foot trucks that do come through here and, and loop through here already, um, from Fifth Avenue. And then. So here's your line of sight, um, showing a, a, sorry. Trying to zoom, sorry. So showing, uh, an automobile on six making a right, which is obviously the only direction you can go. These are line of sight. You can see where the corner of the building is designed. It's, it's pretty significant, the distance between the corner of our building and the road itself. Um, line of sight will not be affected. We don't believe in, in any, any way.
The, 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 these line of sight triangles are, are, are based off of a, a four foot offset from the edge of a travelway. And it's from the, uh, uh, driver's point of view to, um, the direction of where oncoming traffic will be, be coming from. That's what these, these are based off of. Um, it's, it's actually a little difficult to, um, run a line of sight for or a, a roundabout because of the, um, low traffic speeds. Um, as you get to lower traffic speeds, you, you have, um, less distance that the line of sight needs to, to cover. But in each of these situations, we're not in, uh, or, or, or we're not encroaching the, um, uh, property boundaries and, and therefore we're not, um, uh, in, in crushing the proposed buildings in either of these cases.
I want to take a quick pause. John Fitzgibbon, I see your hand is up. Did you want to wait till afterwards or is this something that you wanted to interject for importance at this moment?
Well, just, I just going back to the swept analysis, if we could, um, I think it was a slide before Marcus that you had up.
Yep.
And I think, um, I think it's important because one of Brad and I's concern wasn't necessarily, I think you're gonna make it okay through the roundabout and on to, you know, Main Street. Our biggest concern was those parking spaces that are along the, uh, south side of Fifth Avenue. It's really when you're coming out of the parking lot and you see where your radiant, right about where that hand is, where you might have a roll off on the curb. And, and I get that the swept analysis are purely designed by the perfect truck driver. But these are perfect drug, truck drivers. And I've done a number of swept analysis. Um, when it's touching a curb like that, we, that's just something that becomes a maintenance issue for the town. And so that, that's kind of where, we don't really care about what happens through your property. It's really about what happens off the property as you guys get out of town. And so I think I'd like to study that a little bit more on that corner right there as you come out of that curb. So you're coming in tight on that curb that you guys have that juts out, um, just as you exit out of your property. Um, if you can move the, yeah, right there. So is there any way to adjust that a little bit more to give a better radius turn so that we're not constantly running over the F curb? And I understand your comment on the F curb. Yes, there is a curb there, but there's also, you know, a, um, gutter that works alongside that. But when I see these kind of swept analysis, I know that, that's gonna be a maintenance problem for our town. And to your extent that, um, you know, when you look at the right side of that turning mechanism, it kind of gets close to the curb running to the north side of Fifth Avenue as well as they cross over there. So if there's any way to widen that curb to allow them to get better moving to the west, I think that would be a benefit to the town. So we're not constantly out there replacing curb.
If you need an imperfect truck driver, I am always available.
There's, there's a lot of them, you know, I, I've done a lot of these analysis and, you know, they're like the perfect truck driver and these are not perfect truck drivers.
Thank you, John. I, I appreciate it. And, and again, I apologize, guys, for interrupting your flow, but, um, y- you know, with John, uh, being our, our engineering rep, I, I want to make sure that, uh, he jumps in when things are fresh. Thank you.
Sure. And Marcus, can you speak to that curb?
Yeah, I, I, I think that we definitely have opportunity there to, um, uh, go to a wider radius on, on the, the curb you, you were pointing out to help, help pull that away from, from, um, the travel way and give the truck more, more room to, uh, uh, make that turn on to Fifth.
Yeah, I think if you just reduce that median coming out of the parking lot, it will help that turn radius a little bit better. And I know we have the amount of distance to make that work. What we want to do. The amount of distance to make that work, what we want to do is get them off that curb coming off of the south side of Fifth Avenue. And then allow them to push over farther into the lane to the south. To make that sweep coming into the roundabout, it's doable, I think you guys just need to rework that a little bit.
The the tricky thing with that spot is um to to really get the radius. Where 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 we would all be be comfortable with it, we we would have to partner with 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 staff to. Do a little bit of offsite work where I think that what we're showing now is a five foot. But if we can make a bigger radius where it's it's going to come off come off site, we could really pull that back and and I get and and access there, that's that's. A lot more pleasant for these these larger trucks.
Absolutely, my point is you might have to do a little brickwork, make that radius work, that's that's, yeah, so thanks, Marcus.
Absolutely.
And John, we'll be able to work together with you as we go through DRC.
Absolutely, I you know, all I want to do is make sure you guys, you know, have a comfortable thing for your truck route, I mean, I think it's good for you and for us and. You know, it's and if it's just cost a little bit of brick offsite to make that radius work a little bit better because they're constrained by what we currently have. We want to work with you guys on that, for sure.
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
All right.
Like that level of of granular details is sort of what we we want to work together with you guys.
Yeah, granular detail is good.
Alright, so let's. Now we can we can move on from there, I think.
And then we're back to, we're gonna talk about some architectural renderings and elevations here.
So again, this is the this is a three dimensional rendering that we had our architect do. That shows perspective really standing towards City Hall. Looking at the development, these are, these are the actual architectural renderings, so this would be. The. The elevations that would be submitted during our permitting. Process showing material boards and colors and. Elevations, as you can see, the the tower on the corner has been reduced, we are are. Our preliminary development plan allows thirty five feet, we've we've shrunk that down to. Kind of scale with the neighborhood a little bit more, this is the elevation on Main Street, which is is you can see the kind of the. The mass of the courtyard there, although the the tree, we did that just for for rendering purposes, the courtyard tree is much larger than that. And gives much greater canopy over that areas, matter of fact, the canopy of that tree covers the entire courtyard. And so and then this is the elevation, this is. The southeast corner of the building are those those three bays on the right there. Which would be, and you can see this, the signage is still on these these elevations. And that's not, it's really just to show where the signage is going to be, again, signage is going to be a requirement. Of the individual tenants. As as well as us putting together the sign program. And you can see down below that red line is kind of an outline, we're required to have offsets every twenty feet of our elevations, and so that's kind of showing what. If you're looking down from the top of the building, where the storefront would lie on the building line. The you can see that kind of curved line is our building setback and then that's that's the building setback that the town is has. Put in as a requirement on this property, all of our canopies and and lighting and and everything is is inside that. Building setback line, so nothing will be over the sidewalks or anything. The city sidewalks, that is. There's there's the.
This is from the parking lot.
Right, this is something new, the only thing that you don't have on this side is. Right now, and and the architect didn't have this at the time, the Ace Hardware Building, the seven thousand square foot building number two. That blue area will be a a loading area. With probably a double a double door so that customers who buy items can come around at the back of the store. And we have that loading area that they can pull into and load up whatever they've purchased and and. Not be parked out on the street while they're doing that. Activity. That is the, is that decided, is that the side of this?
From the north side.
That's that's, yeah, so what you can see is. And I was thinking about the comment regarding the trees on the neighbor's property. You can see that cutoff that or that cutout there. Right there. That we can probably use as the accommodation for a little bit of extra space. For those trees or it's it's a tree that's on the property line. So the 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 rendering that you saw, the the sight plan that you saw, which has a straight line. Were required on this elevation to have those those twenty foot. Elevation changes as well, so will necessarily accommodate that tree there, which will probably lessen the impact even more with with our. Our. Bridge foundation, so. Matt, do you want to? Talk a little bit about that bridge foundation since we're on this elevation? Matt Cormos, he's our architect of record for this project.
Good evening, council, and thanks for having us tonight. Um, so, um. I've done this before in Texas, I actually practiced in Texas a while back. And it's very similar site where there's a lot of historic oaks. And in we will be employing the same foundation system. So in in a typical foundation system, you essentially. Cut away at the perimeter and you make it very deep, so it anchors the building and picks the load of the walls and the roof and all that kind of stuff. And and by cutting that, sometimes that's three and four feet deep and and when you hit. You know, small root balls, they just come up and everything's fine. For obvious reasons, we're not going to be cutting very deep. In this case, because we're trying to not cut the root balls of these trees at all. So with guidance from the arborist, we plan to identify where the root ball is. In you know proximity to the tree and essentially create a pile on the outside of the root ball. And that pile is driven down and it is essentially like a column. That is on either side of the root ball. And so the the foundation will then bridge across the piles to make sure that. That obviously the the building doesn't settle or 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 move, but it also doesn't impact the existing tree root ball. And and so in in doing that, then it basically the the tree. Kind of doesn't even know that the the building is there in in some senses, and we plan to do that on. The corner where the cursor is where it says T. Right, yeah, right there, and then that that inset there, so with the architectural angles that we were. Were dealing with it with the offsets, that was a good place to push it in a little bit and and get these. This bridge foundation to work. It was kind of simplified explanation, I hope that's what you what you're asking for. Any questions?
Hey, Mayor, do you mind if I step in on that because we had a similar scenario at the town facilities?
So absolutely not, and I think this is something too that. Just from a council perspective, we may, you know. There may be the ability to help in in terms of this. Accommodation for that tree, so just want to leave all the options open, but yeah, absolutely, John, go ahead.
Yeah, so Eric and I, you know, spending a lot of time building, you know. Area development and foundations for our new town facility adjacent to large live oaks. We went through this same scenario and I refer to that more like a grade beam over the top of root structures that go to pilings. And so it's almost like what he said is bridging a bridge over the tree roots to not affect it. Eric and I spent a lot of time root pruning, we spent a lot of time aerating the roots just to find out what our design needed to be. And I think it's a benefit to the town that we have these guys on board that are. Understanding what our tree systems are and what the root systems are. And that they're actually engaging and incorporating the foundation design to support it. And we have had success in this type of foundation design in our town, so. Just an FYI, I just wanted to put that out for the council members as you guys are discerning through this whole process.
Appreciate it, John, thank you, sir.
Thanks very much.
Take it back, so real quick, these are. They go go to the wall drawing. The the renderings that we provided. Was just for the walls here, these are the perimeter walls. Was kind of more for. Kind of effect for the the city and and then, of course, we got some pushback. That said, well, that doesn't look like the property, it's not really supposed to look like the property, it's supposed to look like the wall. We really wanted to have a three D. Image of the how we would design the wall, and that's probably your best. Elevation right there, that's coming into the entrance off of Sixth. And I know we talked about three feet versus six feet. I think we've we've said from the beginning with with respect to that particular wall. You all tell us which size you want and we'll build it, I don't have a problem putting a six foot wall up there. We accommodated the the town council's comments last time. In trying to provide a more of an open field by moving it down to three feet. I believe there was a study done that about ninety percent of vehicles, their headlights are below three feet. Off the ground anyway. But that being said, if it needs to go to six feet, it's fine, I don't I don't have a problem at all. Designing that six feet. But we will need some direction, you know, during the the final development plan. As to what that's going to be, so. This is the Oakdale, I believe.
Yes, that's where our ready cutout is.
Yeah, that so that that that's the cutout that jogs in. On the northeast corner of the property where that field is, again, what this does is is give you a feel for the wall. And and probably some of the landscaping that's going to be installed next to it, it's it's not really created to to give you a a proper perspective of the property. There's no building in the background and there's not the trees there on the corner that we would do, this was simply an an exercise that that the landscape architect did. On our behalf to show you the design of a wall, we had our. The company that manufactures these walls go out to the property and do some measurements for us this week, as a matter of fact. So they're on board with doing this and the the design of the wall will mimic the property. In color and materials, so. The panels will be sheathed in in a stucco finish to mimic the stucco parts of the. Building, the columns with that'll hold the panels in. Will mimic the brick facade. Lights on the building as well, and there'll be caps on top of those.
And another good thing that this illustrates is how little of the wall you actually see with the mature landscaping. So once the landscaping is mature, you really only see a little.
Yeah, there was there were some comments in the last one about, you know, the six foot wall. It's gonna feel a little little enclosed, but I think that with the as the landscaping matures. I think you're gonna get a much softer feel for the the area.
And Mayor, do you mind if I just make a quick comment on that because I know it's brought up earlier on the three foot. Section on Sixth Avenue. Couple neighbors that have talked to me. And I think if you recall back. In the early discussions when Brad was doing his. Presentation on the design guidelines, it was very important for a lot of the residents that both lived on Oakdale. Along. Kind of the the other side of Sixth Avenue, the north side of Sixth Avenue, one of the things that we did when we did the twenty twenty vision plan was to ensure that we didn't have light bleed from headlights. Into the residential areas, and so I think it's important for the town to really think about the six foot wall and then figure out how you landscape it to hide it. And you know, landscaping is good, but it doesn't necessarily always solve light bleed. So I think we should continue with what our design guidelines are for six foot walls. Along Oakdale and then down Sixth Avenue just to protect the residents from any light bleed.
Yeah, and there may be some. Yeah, I I understand what we were going for there or what there was some discussion about the three foot on the one side, yeah. But I I agree, we want to make sure that certainly on on Oakdale, there there's there's no reason probably not to have a six foot wall.
Yeah, we never went to a three foot wall on on Oakdale, we'd always kept that six.
Right, yeah, and I get why you guys came to the three foot wall from a design sense, it makes standard, you know, it makes sense, but. From a standard of, you know, I've had a lot of residents on Oakdale Street that have come to me and said, why are we doing a three foot wall? And so. And and it, as Brad said, our design guidelines require the six foot wall all the way down to the. Right in, right out turn, and so I think at that point in time, we just need to catcher's mitt to protect the residents. Is my personal.
Mayor, let me jump in here real quick if I can, in addition to that. Design guideline that that we're we're supposed to meet, this wall on Sixth. It's not a straight wall, it undulates around the trees and there's going to be a lot more landscaping in front of it on the street side. Then than if it was just a straight wall, so it does, it does zigzag through that. Down that property line, so it's not like it's a big, long, straight, blank wall, it does have some character to it. Even without landscaping.
And and there may be a situation where, you know, in. So ob- obviously on Oakdale there, you know, in my, this is just my thinking, you know, we want to make it as tall as we can up to standard to to. Try to block any light that, you know, in those residential areas. With with Sixth. You know, you could do maybe four, five, six, you know, it doesn't have to be three, doesn't necessarily have to be six, but. You know, I I do agree with trying not to have the pit look, but also. You may be able to go up in some places where it it's. Where those headlights would focus on homes across the way. So you know, but also to John's point, if he's getting a lot of feedback from over on those, you know. Want to be super sensitive to the neighbors there, they're the ones that have to deal with this, if they would prefer more than less. You know, I certainly want to, I want to hear that, so. Yeah, we could, I'm sure we can work our way through this, not, that's not a problem.
Yeah, okay, great. And then our last slide is talking about tree protection during construction.
Yeah, there was a comment made, we had a had a photo in our last package that had the. Fabric or plastic barrier that we were surrounding the specifically the tree for the courtyard, but but also the two trees in the. Parking lot to protect it during construction. And there was a comment that came back that just requested that we, you know. Put a little more permanency to the protection during construction, so this is just a. Probably not the best photo because our fence would certainly look nicer than this, but. We'll put a chain link fence around the those trees during construction to keep equipment from. Affecting the trees in any any way.
And then also that process is overseen by Eric Hoyer, our arborist. Who will be doing periodic, I believe we have weekly on schedule visits to the construction site. And this is the. Tree protection standard, I believe the diagram was obtained from the scene. And that, we talk about pavers.
These, these are the pavers that we've we've incorporated into our design for the. Purvous areas of the parking lot as well as the courtyard. That will allow. Water to perk into the ground, which helps, you know, keep us from from overburdening the retention area. And. Kind of, we feel that it kind of meets the the. Cities design standards as well.
And Marcus, can you speak to the, I know that this has a different installation process than typical pavers in order to not dig out that area? I know that that was a question about the courtyard area previously, would you be able to speak to that for us?
Yeah, so so. In addition to the radius that we're going to be keeping natural. In addition to the radius that we're going to be, uh, keeping natural around that patio tree where these, these, these papers aren't, aren't proposed to come up to the, the trunk of the proposed tree. Um, the, in, in, in that perimeter. Um, we're only using these, these, uh, pavers as, as a conveyance method where we know that we don't want to run, uh. Uh, storm lines into this area to, to collect storm at, uh, low points. So the reason why we want to use, uh, previous, uh, pavers in this area is so that there's, there's a perk and we can grade. Underneath to allow drainage to, to, to flow, um, back behind the, the buildings where we can ultimately collect it. Um, since we are using this system for, uh, storage. Um, it, it allows us to keep the, uh, the paper section very, very minimal where. Um, if we were to use it for storage, we would need a, a, a thicker, um, uh, section. In order to, uh, hold the, um, amount of storage that we need in the area to meet treatment or a attenuation. Uh, requirements. Along with that, these, uh, bell guard, uh, pavers, um, they're the, the, the typical size of a brick. Um, I know that, um, there are other brands of appropriate papers that get up to about a foot thick. Um, so using the bell guard pavers, it also helps us to minimize the section of what will I need in this patio area. Um, along with that. Um, and stop me if, if, if I'm going too far, uh, Brett and Keith, I know that we talked about the, um. The additional inserts that we'll use for the trees, um, if Eric wants to, to talk about.
Like Eric to comment a little bit on, um, what we've come up with to protect these, these trees post-construction.
Yeah, thanks. Um, there's a, uh. Device, that's not a good term, but there's a product called Wayne Tree Feeders. I don't like the term feeders because trees feed themselves, but anyway. Uh, Wayne stands for water, air, nutrient exchange, and they're basically about, I think about 15 inch long. Plastic sleeves, they're four inches in diameter and you can. Drill them through asphalt, through concrete, through pavers. Uh, into the ground and then you cover them with a cap that looks like a shower cap and there's different colors. So you can match the color of the, of the surface in which the Wayne is being placed. And, uh, there are certain specs, uh. Depending on the, on the diameter of the tree, uh, how many, how many of these feeders you put in around the tree. You put them in concentric circles radiating outward from, from the tree and each ring, uh. Is, I don't know, eight feet from the previous ring, I believe, six or eight feet. Uh, and so it allows water and air and nutrients. To get in through these feeders into the roots and, and you can add fertilizer to them. You can add compost inside them and, and so forth. I've used them successfully in, in several similar type of projects.
Thanks, Eric. Um, so I think that's, that's it for our presentation. Um. I'd probably like to make a, a, a quick comment with no, we can, uh. Take questions after, um. We've assumed from the very beginning that, um, our third workshop would be. Kind of the final workshop that is required for this project. It's, it's in the preliminary development plan. Um, as we were required to have three, um, I know there have been some questions brought up. Um, from various, uh, council members, uh, feeling that they, they don't have enough information. Um, this site specifically has not been engineered. Because we're in this comment section, we would not ever expect to, uh. Pay and, and have, um, our engineers, uh, do complete civil engineering, uh, uh. Drawings for this project. Um, if we don't have. The approval of the site plan, which I think is where this, the, the, uh, town, town meetings, uh, workshops. Kind of come into play. And so our assumption would be that the, because the next step is, is that we go into. Uh, approval of final development plans, uh, per the agreement that, that is on the property. The engineering drawings would necessarily be, uh, put together and submitted during that process. Um, similar with the sign program, um, and some of the other requirements that have been mentioned here. Um, but that the, uh, the workshops were really to get public input on the site plan. And the tree boards input, uh, we understand that they have, uh, a final sign off on the landscape drawings. But the landscape drawings are actually done. The design of the landscaping is done and was submitted to them. You know, a couple of months ago. Um, and so we, we kind of have been going through the process here, assuming that. We will now kind of, uh, flow into the final development plan, uh, process, uh, after this hearing tonight.
All right. Well, you know, we will, uh. We'll see how public comment goes first and, uh, and then kind of direct from there. Based upon what we hear and based upon the level and comfort, uh, of council at this juncture. So. Um, certainly understand where you guys are, but I also want to make sure that we do this right. And so we do this in a way that eliminates, um, any, any last minute delays or any last minute confusion. So, um, you know, we just kind of strive to make sure we have as much as we need to, to move to the next step, pretty much as simple as that. So. And I know I saw some new things even in this presentation, I believe. So. Um, we need to make sure that we have every single thing so we can make sure we get that out to the public. Um, and if I'm mistaken about that, just let me know. So. Um, council at this time, uh, we can move forward on questions. I see several hands up. I'll, uh. I'll go ahead and start at the top, uh, with councilperson David. You're muted, uh, Mandy.
Sorry. Thank you. Um, my biggest thing was a lot of these, uh, pictures were not in the presentation. Um, kind of hard to, um, the, the, the tree site I did see, but your pictures were a lot. Um, easier to visualize that we did not get in our packet. Um, it looks like it's about nine trees if I counted from your. Um, from your, um. Slide that will be taken down. Is that correct? Did I count correctly? About nine that were red. I can't quite see all the dots, but it looked like about eight or nine. Okay. Um, yeah, just, just so that we can have that for the public because I know a lot of, I had a lot of residents asking me. Do we have a final tree count? Then I said, no. So it would be nice to, um. Have all that included and then this, the site, uh, plan for the building. That was helpful because the other pictures that we've had in the past looks like. It's so close to the road that somebody's going to get hit when they're walking on the sidewalk. Like it, it just, so having, having these visuals, I'm a visual person. My dad is deaf. I grew up that way. I have to see it. If I can't see it. It, it's very hard for me. So, um. So, um, yeah, if we could just have all of that included in a packet that we can see, that would be helpful.
I was, and, and I apologize. I was under the impression that the. Um, especially the tree, uh, impact mitigation report and drawings. Would have been included because that's something that we had come up with Susan, you know, two or three months ago.
They were black and white. The one you have was. Easier to see if that makes sense. It was not, it's not, what we have is not what you have on the screen right now. That, at least what I don't have anyway.
That, that is correct. And just so, this is Brad, just to make sure everybody's clear is yes, what, what's in your pack is what was provided to, to us by Marcus Geiger on November 17th. This that you're seeing today has not been provided to us. That's why you didn't have it in your package. Um, so there was information shown tonight, which does help clarify some things that was not provided to us, uh, prior to tonight to put into your agenda packet. I agree with you. I wish it was. I will say though, we did have the building renderings as part of the packet, which would help that, but.
It did, but for me, that 3D visual and then seeing the site plan of where the roundabout is, where the on car, cars. Sorry, I'm just, I'm a very visual person and.
No, you don't. Sorry, this is, um, this is, this is something that we have talked about from day one with this particular project. This is not a, you know, this is not a new conversation in my opinion. Um, you know, I, I don't mean to be difficult about it, but I think it will always play to the favor of the applicant. If, if we have everything possible in the best presentation format, we can possibly have it. It answers questions. It, uh, allays fears. It makes people understand what, what it is we're referencing and what they can expect to see as a finished product. And this is, you know, this is just critical, you know, it's so very important. Um, I've been doing this a long time and I know where we've been and, and how we've been able to get farther. And it is by having all of these types of things. So this has been my advice from day one.
I agree a hundred percent. Um, I will say that, that it's, you know, it's been two months since we submitted things. And what we haven't done is sit idly by after we submitted these things. We, we've been trying to continue down the road of refining the design. And so that's why things have been changed a little bit.
Yeah, it's not a criticism, but it, it, it's not a criticism, but it is something that, you know, you guys are working for two months. And that, you know. If we don't see that evolution, it, it just makes it a little more difficult. That's all, you know, that's all I'm saying. It, we can do it anyway, but. Certainly these, these drawings are very helpful and they answer questions and they help. Um, they help the general public understand what they can expect and, and gauge their comfort level with it. So anyways, I, I think it's a good thing. So council, where are we at here? Uh, councilperson David.
So Mayor, I just want to echo what you just said, you know, this, this information would have been very helpful to have in our packets to review before we're sitting in front of the screens tonight. The, the only question I had Mayor was, uh, I know we're using the WB 4D truck. For the dimensionality. I was just wondering if there is a design weight for that, uh, vehicle.
I, I know that it, it meets the, the H20 loading, uh, rating. Um, and I don't know that, 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 that doesn't really physically answer your, your question. But it's information that we can definitely provide to a staff to, to pass along to the, the, uh, council.
All right. A 10 ton weight limit within town and you know, that, that could clearly exceed that.
Any additional comments, uh, councilperson David?
No, that's it. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Um, councilperson Rose.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to confirm that. The drawing, the site drawings are showing a right-hand turn lane being added when you're coming down. West on six and you're going to make a, a right, you know, get into the roundabout there. I don't see an X. It looks to me like what we have now.
Yeah, there, there is a small right turn lane that's in the right, that's, that'll be there, that'll lead to, it's, it's not. Extremely large, but you can see a little bit of the, um. Cut in there on the property to count for that, that turning.
So is it, is it a right turn lane to get into their parking, not to go into the roundabout?
It's to get into their property. Yes, that's correct. Get onto their property. That's correct.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought they were doing something at a six. And the other item I want to bring up. Uh, or ask, I guess. It, it was my understanding that there's going to be a restaurant in this, um, development. And typically, in my experience, the parking requirements for a restaurant are closer to 10 spaces. Per thousand square feet, not three and a half or four. And at the four was closer to the amount you need for retail and doctors and offices. Am I correct on that, Brett?
Well, well, generally, yes. And, and that's, that's one of the things that's different here is that. Um, as I stated earlier, so the, your code adopts the downtown design guidelines within your land development code. That has its own separate parks, parking standards from your general parking standards that would be more in line with what you were saying, councilmember Rose.
Yeah.
Words, words sites, but, but for this property, these apply.
Yeah. And I understand that our design code made that, you know, concession be for development here. But I'm really not in favor of it accepting anything under than four spaces per thousand. Cause I think we're already going to have parking issues if we have restaurants in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, councilperson Rose. Um, next, uh, we have, uh, councilperson Martini and then councilperson Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I, I mirror your comments about the, um. The, um, this information that we are seeing for the first time, uh, or this modified information. Uh, from the beginning of this project, the documentation. Uh, seems to have, to be, uh, one step behind. The workshop process and that's disappointing because it has been from the beginning. So. Uh, I would have preferred to see this in our packet. Um, I think this is, um. Um, something that obviously we all need to review. And as far as the workshops go, I, Brad, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, uh, there's a, uh, we have a minimum of three workshops, not necessarily just three. Is that correct, Brad?
I don't think it says minimum. I think it just says three. I don't, uh, and I only look at that condition, but I don't think it's a minimum.
Okay. It, you know. Council can request whatever.
Right.
Feel they need and, you know, I mean, if council at the end of this. Council feels like there needs to be another session in some format, we will, we will do that. Um, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to rush to get somewhere. We don't want to go. I want to make sure that we take our time to get someplace that everyone does want to go. So, uh, let's do it right and, you know. We'll go from there.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree, Mayor. Uh, and, and to the applicant's point, yeah, it doesn't make sense to engineer the heck out of something if, if you don't know. If you don't know that you're going to have, you know, uh, you know, if we're all going in the same direction. So as far as specifics go, um, the, uh, piles for the bridge foundation for that building. Uh, I think that's, um. I think that's a great plan. I'm really impressed with the, uh, effort that, um. Eric and John and everyone else made on the new facilities to save those trees. They did a fantastic job. It's really impressive that we were able to do that. And not only, not only from the foundation perspective, but also from the roof line being altered to, to save, uh, part of that canopy. It's, it was a great effort and, uh, I hope that we, you know, continue that with this project. As for the bridge foundation, there was some discussion on the wall that runs along Oakdale Street. And the, the proximity to some of the large trees there and possibly using, um. You know, a bridge foundation or some other type of less intrusive, uh, foundation for, uh, around some of those trees. That are close to the, the line on the wall. Is that, is that a possibility here also?
Yeah, Bill, the, um, the design of the wall has been changed so that the, um, the corners that you see. Are going to be columns that are, will be on a small foundation.
Okay, good.
And the wall itself will be a panelized system.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good. Any, any additional thoughts or comments, uh, councilperson Martini?
Then we. Oh, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, and councilperson Williams.
Uh, good evening. Um, can we go back to the truck drive in turns? That's where most of my questions lie. All right. I see that, you know, you've got, you've made it work coming in, coming in six, going out fifth, all that. And the same with the fire truck. Um, Brad, are we serviced by, serviced by the fire department up on Apopka Island or on Maguire?
I don't know that specifically.
Cause I, I've never seen a fire truck on six coming into town.
Right.
It's been a long time.
Maguire.
We have automatic aid, so it's a matter of which trucks are available at what time and which station is going to be coming through.
Okay, so there's. So will first with the truck coming down Maguire be able to make the Fifth Avenue roundabout and then in going the opposite direction? Um, I at least need to make sure that would happen. But also how do we, how do we manage trucks coming down Maguire from 50 in the turnpike? How do they access this? How do they access this?
For, for the the trucks that are going to be accessing the site for for deliveries, um, they're, they're going to have specific um, truck routes that that they'll have to follow to access the site where they'll have to access from from a Fifth Ave, Fifth Avenue and exit on to, excuse me, they have to enter the site from Sixth Avenue and exit on Fifth.
Okay, so that, that's all well and good. You can lay that on paper all you want, but that's not gonna be what happens. We're gonna have trucks coming in on Fifth, going out on Sixth, and then coming back down Main Street. I mean, isn't that, to me, that's gonna be the logical of what happens. I mean, I see the deliveries that we get across the street at Windermere Market. Um, they all come down Maguire, no matter what they're being told, uh, even on time deliveries. So that's kind of my concern is like, this is all designed on only one way in, one way out. Um, same kind of process happened when this whole project got designed twenty years ago. The parking lot across the street was designed to enter towards the back of the property and come out the front. Um, and the roundabouts were moved too close. And that's the reason we have that beat up chip piece and it's hard to turn into the other parking lot. Um, cause they were designed in a certain way. My concern is it just only giving this idea, okay, it works one direction is doesn't doesn't give me a warm and fuzzy feeling that it's it's gonna happen this way. And then enough, can two vehicles come up and pass each other on Fifth? Uh, to get into this parking lot?
Uh, yes, Fifth, Fifth Avenue is a twenty-four foot drive, uh, which will accommodate two, two vehicles.
Okay, cause I I know we had concerns with Fifth not being as wide as we thought it was. Um, that's been confirmed that it's, it's, the width is there, Brad?
Yes, yes, we we did look at that and we had information from previous surveys and and work that's out there. So yes, it is appropriately shown on the plans.
Okay, okay, cause yeah, I'm just curious, cause it's always tight in there. Um, I'm in and out of, I'm in and out of that area all the time. Um, just backing my truck out of one of those spaces, her along Fifth. Um, you touched the curb on the other side. That was the only reason, and I don't think my truck was twenty-four feet wide. Uh, or long, so backing out of the spaces, I'm, you know, touching. That's the reason my question went that way. Um.
Brad, can I comment real quick? Um, this, this particular design for uh, truck traffic would um, necessarily become an exhibit to the leases for the tenants of the property. So they'd be communicating with their delivery folks as to how the property is accessed. So I would assume between that and code enforcement, we can probably capture, you know, the vast majority of the trucks that are gonna attempt to try to deliver something the wrong way.
Right.
Typically, these guys, these truck drivers, if they, if they are cited more than once, they'll, they'll figure out the alternative.
They'll figure it out. Okay, um, last quick question. How wide are the parking spaces?
Nine and a half.
Widthwise.
A nine, a nine, nine and a half feet, feet wider or nine, nine feet wide.
They're nine foot wide? Okay. All right, that's all I've got for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I saw, um, John, did you have any, did you have further comment, Fitzgibbon?
Yeah, just uh, on the swept analysis that they were talking about and also about fire trucks. Uh, to just answer Andy's call, you know, sometimes the fire trucks will cut across a lane and then come in on the outside bound lane to get in, and that's really just uh, the developer working with the fire trucks for them to understand accessibility. So that could be overcome and just understanding that. So I just want to make sure that um, you guys understood that way that we work it out with the fire department.
So I think that, um, you know, those guys will get where they need to go, no matter what, as long as the room is there. Um, but I do think to to Andy's point that your regular delivery folks will also go where they want to go. So.
Yeah.
We, we do want to make sure that we leave a little fudge factor in there. I think it just, you know, experience tells us this is kind of how it goes sometimes.
Correct. And and I was just answering Andy's call because, you know, a lot of times like if they're gonna come down the roundabout and then how do you get back in, right? So that'll all be worked out with the fire department when it happens. But I still think we need a little tweaking to the swept analysis for sure.
Yeah, I agree. It it looks kind of tight and, you know, I don't want to get hung up on something that that seems small to everyone, but it it will be a kind of a constant nuisance if we don't take our time and do that, that swept analysis correctly and have a little extra room. So, okay.
Yeah, and I did, I did also want to answer a call from um, what Tony Davit asked relative to um, truck weight on an H SS twenty-two truck or an HS twenty truck. Um, typically, those are, Tony, HS twenty trucks are usually about sixteen tons or, excuse me, uh, yeah, sixteen tons or about thirty-two pounds. But we do have in our ordinance that if they're delivering within the town of Windermere, that we allow uh, weight overages on our roads. I think what we're just protecting on the ten ton weight limit is those trucks that travel through our town, not necessarily delivering through our town. So we have a lot of residents, construction and those kind of things that we allow the overage of ten ton weight limits as long as they have a delivery ticket coming to our town. So I just wanted to uh, have a clarification on that as well, cause that was one of Tony's comments.
In my mind, yeah, in my mind, I can hear uh, councilperson Rose laughing because we, we've been down this, this road with the truck weights and it's pretty complicated. But uh, yeah, I think that uh, that that is exactly the way it is supposed to work in theory anyway, so we'll go with that. Um, all right.
Mayor, I have one, one comment on the fire, um, just so.
Yes, sir.
Before this would come before you with the final, you know, engineering plan, we will have it reviewed by the fire and get their sign off on the site plan. So they will have a review of it before it will come back to you through the public hearings.
Good. Thank you, sir. Brad, anything additional that you want to add to the presentation done by the applicant?
No, sir. Only, only thing I would like to just kind of clarify again about the plan set, um, and not to disparage anyone. But just, I want to make sure everyone is clear what happened. So I did email the development team on January ninth, asking if they had any updated plans to submit for the workshop because we were putting the agenda together. On January twelfth, uh, Marcus responded to me that they had no additional plans or updated plans or information to submit. And just write me three like notes and that, that is, so we did not have anything submitted other than what you had in your packet for tonight's meeting. So I just wanted to make sure that was cleared to 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 everyone.
And I do understand that, I do understand that, Brad, and I know everyone else does as well, I believe. Um, but, but it's a, it's a fine, fine point. And listen, it it's not about it, it, it's not punitive in any way. But all I'm saying is, and and I have said this from the beginning, so it, the more information we have, the better information we have, the more opportunity for success that we have with the project. And, you know, this is a partnership i- in a lot of ways. So, um, you know, we just want to make sure that we have everything from the applicant so we can answer questions, make people feel comfortable, give them the answers whether they like them or not. Um, and then we can address where we can make improvements or we can do tweaks, um, or make people feel more comfortable with them. So i- it's really, it's, i- it's really, you know, it's just what we've learned. We've learned it the hard way. And and I just try to avoid learning those lessons over and over again. So, um, you know, so hey, appreciate every, everything that everybody provided tonight is much more helpful. So. Um, council, any additional questions, comments or concerns for the applicant? Seeing one, I I don't think I see any. It's a little hard to tell. There's a lot of hands up, so we're gonna get to everybody, I promise. Um, Robert, do you have anything, or Tanya, anything that you guys would like to add at this juncture?
Uh, no, Mayor, just a um, house cleaning item, uh, which like me to open up the chat again, um, in conjunction with public comment.
So we will open up the chat, but please do, do us the favor in the chat. Use the chat to ask a question to council or staff, not to have kind of back and forth, hey, here's the answer to that question. And the only reason that I ask that is so we make certain that we're putting out the most accurate information that we possibly can for everyone. Um, and again, I know there's lots of folks on the line. We're gonna get to everybody, so feel free to use the chat for Q and A um, to staff and or council. And with that, I'm gonna just start up here in the upper left-hand corner. You know what I'm gonna do? Um, Tom, I'm gonna give you the opportunity. Tom Stroop is on. He's a councilperson elect. Um, I'm gonna let him go and then we'll move to Vicky and across the way as we go. Um, I might skip over to Susan and Eric so they can discuss any tree concerns, but again, we will get to everyone. So, um, Tom Stroop.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just a couple of quick questions and this, I should already ask these questions previous to this, but is this, uh, I've, don't Brad said there was gonna be three workshops. Is this the first public workshop we've had on this since it was presented to town council, whatever, two thousand nineteen?
This, this is the third.
This is the third.
Yes, this is the third workshop. When was the first one? Don't mind me asking. Approximately.
I have to go back and look too. I know, uh, I believe it was in March of twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you.
Let me verify. I'll check that real quick.
It's, it's close enough.
Yeah.
Um, can I ask another question? Maybe that, maybe you know this, maybe you don't, but what is the maximum amount of occupants we could, how many stores can we have down there? Maximum, speaking if we divided it up as small as we could according to our standards, what is the maximum amount of businesses we could put in this, in this new area?
We don't have that, that calculation, um, because how uh, this is um, developed and how the code is, it's on the gross square footage of the building. How it could get split up really would more driven by the Florida building code and occupancy requirements and things like that. Um, so I I don't have that information as part of the review process at this point.
Can I ask you a favor, Brad? Would you mind getting that for me if if you could? I'm just curious how many, I'm just curious how many businesses we're gonna put downtown? Um, especially in relation to how many we're replacing, cause I think there's only, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's only four or five that we're, we're displacing as a result of this. Is that correct?
I think that's about the right number. I think it's, yes.
Yes, I'm just curious to how many we're gonna, I know how many we're getting rid of. I'm just curious how many we're going to you know, how many we're gonna have when this is all said and done, just as a matter of perspective.
Yes, sir.
And one thing I thought I heard you mention earlier, and I, if I miss, miss, misheard you, so to speak, I apologize. Did you say we were gonna move the roundabout to accommodate some of this construction?
No, not, not, not to accommodate. It's, it's a project on its own. Um, so it's not because of this project. And I don't, maybe Robert can address it more. It's a project, it's a project that the town had in process or a study, I should say, a study that the town had in process.
Yeah, one of the things that we were talking about as far as relieving the amount of traffic coming in and out of town was to get them in and get them out. And that's one of the philosophies that we're looking at. And one way to do that would be to first eliminate the choke point at Sixth uh, Avenue. Um, and the way we can do that is maybe shift the roundabout a little bit to the northwest. Um, but we also have a lot of room within the roundabout itself, uh, with the brick pavers and whatnot, so we can reduce the footprint um, of the interior of the roundabout to accommodate a better flow of traffic at that location. And what that would do is it would then open up the possibility of traffic improvements at Windermere Road and Main as well as Chasing Lane.
Some of these projects too, to Robert's point, Tom, some of these projects were designed as we were looking at good projects to do, utilize with potential surtax dollars that were not approved. So, um, you know, that we, we are always trying to think ahead in terms of how do we do this? What do we do? Um, and have good, solid, you know, plans on the shelf should we have opportunities that that come along. So.
Okay, that's, uh, and I, I can get more details on that later. I was just, I thought I heard that, the comment made, and I was just trying to clarify that. So the only thing I can ask Brad, if it's not too much trouble, is that you can let me know when the first public workshop was done on this.
Absolutely.
Possibly what the maximum amount of businesses, um, you think we'll be able to put in there?
Yes, sir, I can get that to you.
If I can answer real quick, um, we are currently marketing, um, building number one. We have si- uh, seven spaces uh, available for, for uh, lease in that building. Building number two is Ace Hardware, so the seven thousand square foot building will be a single use.
Uh, but, and what I guess I want to say is Ace dropped out, how many could you put in there?
Practically one. Well, yeah, practically speaking, one because the storefront's so narrow.
All right, thank you.
Um, and I think too, it's, it's not only about the number of businesses, it's about the mix of businesses, you know, that, that can benefit the town um, and and residents. Um, next up, I want to make sure that we move um, to Susan Carter. She is our chair of the tree board. Susan?
I want to um, thank everybody for working so hard on this project. It's been going on for quite a while. Um, I'd also like to introduce Jen Hitchcock from Orlando Tree Consulting. She is on with us tonight and um, is representing tree board as we go through this project. Um, I had a few questions. I, one of them is um, has to do with the height of the building and um, in particular, the patio tree. And we're doing a lot of damage. It's, the height of the building is going to require that we limb up that tree and we're also desperately trying to protect the root zone. And I feel like that's almost, that's a lot with that height of building on that tree on that corner, and that's been one of our major trees that we have worked to protect. Um, in doing that, um, major pruning also on these trees, um, uh, should be done in stages. And if we're talking where we're worried about limbing up because there might be trucks coming in or we're talking about trees around fencing or, or the um, outside wall, we need to make sure that we do it in in stages to best protect these trees. And um, we've requested, talking about these trees in the past, that um, a growth regulator be applied um, by our arborist in advance, um, one to two months prior to construction that would help see these trees through the construction and best protect them. That's one point. Um, another question I have is landscape. Uh, I don't feel that we, we approve that. Uh, we talked about it, um, but we didn't have a wall design or anything like that. We've talked about protecting the root zones of the trees that we've just, just spent all this time protecting and not overplanting them. We still need to update our uh, tree, um, our allowed trees that um, I, whatever that list is called. And we haven't done that yet. And we said we'd be happy and we would be happy to work with everybody and the landscape architect to update the list so that they have a different variety to work from. Um, for example, the um, hollies that they're recommending are very sus- susceptible to disease. Um, moving from that, um, the laurel oak that we've discussed on the northwest side of the property, that's been one thing that we've brought up a couple of times. And that we were still like, can we still try to save it? It's still in good condition. Um, it got a great, very high rating for, on the um, tree survey. So, um, let's see, I think that's pretty close. Oh, my concern too. The rendering that you showed, the elevation from the front that you showed tonight shows this nice, beautiful big oak tree in the front of it. I gotta be honest, the oak tree that's going to be left, which aren't gonna be many of them in the front, is the one on the corner. And it does not have that nice, big, full appearance. So, and it is also in distress right now. So I just wanted to point that out that that's a little bit misleading. Um. There are additional trees that will be lost on the site, but they're, some of them are invasive, some of them are palm trees and things like that, and they're marked with an X. So when we say that there are this many trees that are being removed, there are additional trees, so it will adjust the canopy and the feeling, but um, of that when you look at it. So we, they've done a lot to protect the ones that we've gone out there and really worked to save. And I'm grateful for that because we have some very old growth trees. But I did want to point out that it's going to be, it is a little misleading. A little misleading when you look at and say only these trees are being impacted, so. I think that's my main comments for tonight, or for now.
Thank you, Susan. Certainly appreciate all the hard work that you and your committee have done. To get to where we are today. I know there's still work to be done. Um, and we want to make sure that, uh, we just continue pushing on it, so appreciate it. Thank you so much. Alright, so now we will, um, let's just go up to, um, we'll do, just so everybody kind of knows, we'll do Vicky. Um, the Withers, um, and Nancy Nix, uh, in that order next. Vicky?
Alright. So, um, I've got a few comments and I'll try to go through them and, um. See what we can do about them. Um, on the, not to, to recap too much what Susan just said, but on the tree impact mitigation site. Um, there is at least one significant tree that's been left off that, um, plan. And if you've got that plan up and you're looking at the parking lot. There is a laurel oak that's actually listed on that plan, but it's not marked green, red, or any other color. But that was the one Susan was referencing that, um, we had hoped it was going to be saved, but the problem, as we've been. Reminded is that it's gonna be where some of the drainage is, um, so. Um, that, that tree needs to be marked as, if it is going to be coming out, it needs to be marked and included in that tree mitigation plan. Um, also not to get too much into the weeds on the landscape plan. The, uh, on the, the right away on Oakdale. There's a large section of podocarpus that have become a hedge. That's quite pretty, and in walking the site, um, the representative said that they would keep that because they are on the right away. So it's not going to be removed. But, um, they're not marked on the landscape plants, you're not seeing them on the landscape plan. But they should be, um, included because they are being saved. Um, and then also on that landscape plan. There is a, a right, there's two different varieties of sword fern that are being called out, one of them in particular is on the category one invasive species list. As, um, identified by IFAS. So, um, there's still some work that needs to be done on that landscape plan, I'm not going to be, go into more details on that, but just to say that. Um, it does need another look. Tree fencing, um, Erica said that there was going to be three of the existing oak trees that are going to be fenced. And there's this, first I want to say, let me go before I say that. I really truly do appreciate all the work that's been done to try to save so many trees on site. Um, I do also truly appreciate that when, um, it's been brought to the attention of the applicant. That adding a lot of, um, landscape material around the heritage oats trees, particularly the two in the parking lot. Was going to be an issue that those plants were eliminated and now it looks like it's going to be mulch. So let me first say, I really appreciate that, and I think that's going to be, um. A better benefit for our town to try to keep those trees as safe as healthy, as hel- excuse me, as healthy as possible. But, um, my question is, yes, there's through, the three of the heritage trees are being called out to be fenced, um, during construction. But what about all the other trees that are on that plan? Um, that are being saved, how are they being protected? So that's a question, and then if I can continue with my questions, just get them all out at once. Um, along the north side where that's gonna, um, bump in to save the tree that's on, um, the neighbor's property at five thirteen. I am, um, curious about if there's going to be a guttering or drain system so the runoff from the building doesn't. Go that dire- direction and then dump on the tree. And then, um. Also, um, the propane, under story propane tank on, in town square. Our town, um, area, downtown area, I'm kind of opposed to that, but. I don't know what can be done or how that can be addressed. And, um, lastly, I'm curious. As to how the trash truck is going to pick up the trash from the dumpster. As there's that little plan talking about how trucks were coming in and out of town. I thought the dumpsters, dumpsters loaded from the front. So how is that dumpster coming in, that trash truck coming into town to pick up that trash? So those are my questions and comments, and now I step back.
Alrighty, um, that's a lot of good comments, and I'm looking at the dumpster as well, wondering, that's quite a little move there. So, uh, yeah, I'm sure that. That'll have to be addressed. As, as far as, uh, who, who would like to respond to the tree questions, or do we want to take those questions? And make sure we have the right answers and distribute?
I can answer a lot of those.
Eric, that would be great, thank you, sir.
Okay, uh, regarding Susan's concern about the, uh. Courtyard tree and having to prune it, um. The canopy of the courtyard tree is fifty feet north and south, and it's seventy feet east and west. And. The courtyard is about those dimensions, it's about fifty-three feet north and south and about sixty-seven feet east and west. So there would be little if any pruning at all on that tree, because the courtyard matches the size of the canopy, which I believe. Uh, Brett had mentioned earlier. As far as pruning for the fence, uh, most of the trees along Oakdale. Are not oaks, other than the ones at the northeast corner, and that's where that open area is going to be, so there's no fence there. Most of the trees are, are cabbage palms, there's that potocarpus that Vicky referenced. There is one laurel oak about halfway between fifth and sixth. That may require some pruning, but if it's only a three or four foot wall. Uh, or even a six foot wall, probably very little pruning would have to be done. Uh, and you'd have to elevate the trees anyway to accommodate cyclists and pedestrians, so they would be elevated probably to a height of eight or nine feet anyway. So I don't see the wall would require any additional, uh, pruning. Uh, plant growth regulator, that's certainly something that was discussed in the field and, and can certainly be. Done during the course of the construction. I don't disagree with the pruning in phases, but I don't think it's going to be necessary, the, uh, two large trees south of Bill, or east of building one. Uh, has a very large, uh, planting area, it's about sixty feet by about fifty-three feet. And, uh, uh. Which would accommodate, uh, most of that canopy, uh, might require a little bit of pruning, but. Uh, it's actually not going to be over any building, it's going to be over a parking area and some other open areas, so it's not going to interfere with any. Any vertical, uh, construction. As far as protection of additional trees that Vicky was concerned with, um. That's certainly something that can be, uh, discussed, and, you know, I, I can make that call as to what. Wouldn't, would be necessary, uh, to do that, a lot of these trees are outside the construction area. But there are a few others that could probably benefit from, uh. Tree barricades and so forth. Uh, and I just wanted to answer, I think Vicky had asked this question, uh, earlier as well, as far as the. Uh, trees being removed and the trees remaining, uh, there's thirty-six total trees which are remaining. Uh, twenty-six of which are oak trees. And, and those include trees that are along Oakdale, those include the four trees that are, uh. Adjacent to the parking area and adjacent to building two that are just off site, but I'm including those because they were included on the original survey. So I think, hopefully that answered most of the questions.
Um, that does, I still have a question about, um, the water runoff from the building from building two where the oak tree butt out. Pump, bump out is with the floating footer there? Or is there going to be gutters there or an underground system? How's the water being transported along that property line?
That's an engineering question.
Okay, well, it's kind of treason engineering, isn't it?
Yes, we will have, um, a, a gutter system on them to drain water back into the. You know, whatever retention that we have, whether it's, you know, the pervious pavers in the parking lot are back into the. Water retention area, so nothing's going to be draining off the buildings. You know, uh, uh, straight off the building, there'd be gutters along the whole thing, with regards to the, uh. Um, the trash pickup, we're not prohibited from driving in off of Fifth Avenue. Um, that, it's just the truck traffic, the, the trash pickup. Will, will come in off of Fifth Avenue, head into the trash thing, pick up the trash and then head out and then make the round. You know, head out on, on Sixth, um, and then back north on, uh, Main Street. Um, those trucks are well within the limits of, of, uh, the, uh, turn radiuses and everything. And that's how those, um, that's how those businesses that are there are currently serviced is off of Fifth. So the, the, uh, garbage truck comes in off Fifth, uh, goes around, like services their dumpster, goes around and comes back out on Fifth currently. So this would provide them another outlet.
I, I thought it did, but I was very curious if you've got a truck leaving from the, um, parking lot and you've got the trash truck coming in. How does that get worked out?
Typically, the Ace Hardware is serviced at, at a very specific time, and they're the only business that'll be us. Utilizing like the trucks that we're talking about. It would be pretty uncommon for them to encounter each other.
Okay, and then my last comment really was about the propane, and that's just my personal thing, I don't, I don't feel there should be a, a buried propane tank in town. But I don't, that'll be something somebody else has to address, it's just certainly my opinion. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, you're okay.
Thank you, Vicky.
Alright, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. We'll move to the Withers.
Uh, I'll start, Angela's put some comments on the chat box, but, uh, you can read those there. My first comment is that these plans need North Arrow and the graphic scale on them, so we can figure out the dimensions. Uh, ourselves and check them. Uh, second is, when we did the, uh, design standards for this block. We were trying to get away from that repetitive shopping center look, and that's why we put the twenty-foot module on there. We said we want sort of a different facade every twenty feet. Well, the elevations to me have a very repetitive, there's five or six different pediments that look very, very similar and very shopping center each. You got two towers that are repetitive, and I would like to actually see the tower on the, uh. Uh, the roundabout at Sixth and Main disappear, it's could be, it's too massive for that corner. The. Other, I have a question for maybe Susan, and that goes up to the little, uh, part, the over, old extension of Fifth Avenue. Between this property and the, uh, church. It looks like there is a lot of green space and the, uh, green trees. In that overlay plan which shows the new plan over the, uh. A aerial photograph. And of course, all that underground stormwater. It's right up against the property line there, is also going to cut all those trees for those, uh, trees in that park. Uh, Susan, or has the team looked at that as potential impact on a neighbor besides just the one down, uh. Uh, next to the brick building?
I'm not exactly, are you talking about the trees on Oakdale and Fifth?
No, the old Fifth, uh, right away, where we've got that oval, uh. Pocket, between us and the, uh, church. Well, yeah, Pocket Park or whatever it's called, but it looks like on the overlay, there's a lot of greenery along that, uh. Uh, north property line. And I'm just wondering if you've looked at the trees on the Pocket Park or that little extension of Fifth Avenue? And determined it, because if you understand that, um, water system is going to be below ground. Uh, and therefore no roots are going to go, uh, south of that property line.
Um, Stephen, I, I can answer this a little bit, some of that. Some of that foliage you're seeing are the large heritage oaks that are on the corner of Oakdale and Fifth. And, and some of the other foliage which is overlaid with parking spots, that particular, uh, tree is going to be removed. So, so, and that's a pretty large tree, which, uh, I think accounts for a lot of that, um, foliage you see in the Pocket Park.
Well, I, I see greenery that goes all the way down the, uh, uh, property line. And my concern is not up next to the parking, but next to that, uh, underground storm sewer. Still, or storm water, I mean, it may, maybe, uh, rainwater, it might be. Uh, you know, other water. Have we, have we looked at that, Susan, is my question, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just saying. From my, looking at this, uh, overlay plan, that looks like, uh. Uh, all roots are going to be cut along our, uh, very north property line.
We, I'm. We did, we did look at a lot of it, um, right now I'm having a hard time getting. Let me see if I can minimize this.
Cutting down forty.
So we've, we've gone through and, um. We did, um, I'm trying to think, we talked extensively, extensively about the roots. That bordered. Oakdale, but, um. And then came into Pocket Park, we did, there are a lot of crepe myrtles there. And I'm trying to see, again, I'm looking at it, and I've got something in, oh, there it is, I needed to get that thing gone. Um, let's see.
Anyway, just a comment, a concern.
Right, no, I'll go back and look.
Park aren't, uh, uh, root pruned to death.
Exactly, exactly, I'll go back and look at this again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Alright, thanks everybody. Angela, did you, I, I, we do see your comments in there, mostly on the, the, uh, architecture in the corner. Uh, tower and the proximity to the roundabout with that corner.
Yes, I just want to read, I think those are two important points I really want to get across, everybody, so I'm, I'm appreciating very much the issue with the. Freeze and the landscaping, but those buildings are really important too, and I think we need to. Re-look that corner, especially with the whole tower concepts of the corners.
She's married to an architect.
Can't help myself, sorry.
True, true enough, alright, thank you guys, we sure appreciate all the input. Nancy Nix? You're muted there, Nancy, I know you've been, there we go.
I, okay, um, I just, I have two questions, um, first of all, like Mandy David, I'm a visual person. And I'm wondering if we will be able to get a rendering. Of the entire block from Fifth to Sixth that shows not only the new buildings, but the existing buildings. Um, because looking at, I, I've seen the renderings just of the new buildings, and of course they look taller than just one story to me. But I'd like to see how they blend in with the existing buildings. I'm concerned that they're going to make the existing buildings look like stepchildren. And I just thought if we could have a rendering of, do we already have one? Well, that one, but it doesn't show. The existing buildings.
Right, so, I mean, we can certainly, um. We can certainly request that overlay, I think that would be helpful, um, from a couple angles, and we'll, we'll answer a lot of questions as well. I'll ask the, uh. The V three guys if they're able to, are you guys able to do that?
Confused, are you trying to, um, uh, match it up with the buildings next door to us?
Yeah, I guess, the whole block.
We just want to see what the block looks like, I want to see what it.
Yeah, I know, I can, I could probably, I mean, I can make a quick comment, the, the building next to us to the north is a two-story building, I believe, the architecture building. So, yes, it's going to be much taller, there's a, I believe, a thirty-five foot, um, height limitation on Main Street. Our building on the corner there is the, the peak of that. Would be, which I guess somebody called the tower, it's not really a tower, the peak of that's only twenty-six feet. So we are, are substantially shorter, um, in our development than the building to the north of us.
Well, I understand that, I just want to see visually, what am I going to see when I look at that block?
I, I would be probably, uh, inclined to s-. Say I don't really know how I could do it photographically. But I, I can't, I can't send my architect out to, to, to draw the building next door to us, that, that. And I understand what you're trying to accomplish, um, and maybe we could do it some other way, but I, it, it would be. It would be an exercise in, in. Not futility, but it would be a strange exercise for the architect to. Have to go out and, and redraw another building next to ours, we don't even have a rendering from that viewpoint anyway. These renderings were done. As an accommodation to the folks to see what the building is going to look like. Um, our requirements are, are only for the, um, the actual building elevations, this is not an elevation, this is a. A three-dimensional render. This is not an elevation. This is a a three-dimensional rendering. So it, I I probably can try to figure out something to do photographically, but beyond that, I don't know how we could accommodate that.
That, I think that would just help a lot of people understand what is our street gonna look like. Um, and all all I've seen is the new stuff, which looks nice. I would just like to see what it looks like with the existing buildings there. Um, that was my one question. And my second question is, I understand you have a place for Ace Hardware. And they tend to put a lot of equipment and stuff outside. Is that gonna be left outside all the time?
Well, the the plan right now, this is, this is Walter Tools' um uh home site, if you will. He's going to sort of semi-retire into this location because he lives in Windermere. Um, and I I'm assuming everybody knows Tools Ace Hardware. Um, but the the plan right now is this is going to be a boutique Ace Hardware. This, so they're not gonna sell like tons of grills and they're not gonna have pallets of sod and and mulch and things that that's for sale. This is gonna be more in the the vein of, and I have a rendering somewhere. I wish I could have shared it with the town. There's a a a concept called Leaf and Pedal, which is a hardware store up in Birmingham that we're designing this after and what he has decided to do. So he's gonna be selling plants and 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 landscape, like, you know, small things that you would put in your yard in the courtyard during the day. Um, we've been talking extensively. The lease is now signed with with Walter and and his partner Neil Asma. Um, but there will not be, you know, sidewalk equipment and and things out in front of the store all the time.
I see.
Or in the rear where they would normally sell, you know, their mulch and their s- their soil, bags of soil, things like that. That's not gonna take place on you. They don't have that ability on our property. I don't think the code accommodates palletized sales.
Oh, okay. That was just my, my thoughts there, cuz I know, and I do like Ace Hardware stores. But I do know that they tend to put a lot of stuff out front and leave it out there. So I was curious how this is gonna affect our town.
I can, I can help with that question.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I I can help with that question as well. Um, a requirement of this P U D, and it's already in your town code. But it was also specifically put in to the ordinance for this P U D, for this project. Is they cannot do outdoor display of merchandise unless it's consistent with the current count town code. So they could not do, you know, that kind of hardware outdoor display. They'd have to do it consistent with the town code like every other business has to um meet within the town.
I see. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate that. And thank you for being patient. I know everybody's waited. Um, we've had a lot of, a lot of really good back and forth tonight, so we wanna keep that going. Um, John, John Fitzgibbon, I've got you next here. Did you wanna comment again, or or do you want me to keep moving with the public comment?
Well, I just wanna make a quick comment for um, I think it is important. And Brad, thank you for answering the call on that. You know, uh relative to what our code allows and what it doesn't allow. But I also know that for the town, scale is everything, right? And so we always wanna know whatever, and I'm going through this right now with the Windermere Pavilion, right? How big is it? How tall is it? How scaled is it? And so I think that would be beneficial for the developers to at least show us. Because I think actually, to be honest with you, the Margaritaville building is gonna be much taller than the other buildings. And if you guys could do a photo overlay of just showing the town that you guys are probably gonna be a lot smaller and shorter and not so scaled. When I look at this rendering, and renderings are always about point of view, right? Um, whether it's street view, bird's eye view or whatever, I think that could be done easily. And I'm looking at the renderings now to know that the scale's not so bad. It's very pedestrian scale. Um, I think that would give a lot of comfort to Nancy and a lot of the people. If we could just show scale and understanding what it means in relationship to the existing buildings that we have adjacent to it.
We will attempt to do whatever we can.
All right. Hey, those of you who have spoken, if if you can take your hands down, that'll help me a little bit and it'll bring new people to the queue, so I don't miss anybody. Uh, Brandy is next.
Hi, um, so I have a couple of questions before I get into my comments. Um. The first question is, did I hear correctly that the wall system has now gone back to a prefab wall that will have to be installed over existing posts, or did I misunderstand that? That was one question before I get in anything else, cuz it's gonna affect my comments. And then the second question is, is if there's any kind of transparent like overlay that's less opaque um to show the trees with the footprints of the buildings or not, if you have that before I get started.
You know, we had, there was a rendering done at one point that showed the the tree canopy. Um, and I, Brad, you can tell me if you still have that. We don't have it in our package now.
Well, I don't mean a rendering. I mean an an a bird's eye view aerial with the footprint of the building from a bird's eye perspective. If not, it can work with what's there, but I was just curious.
Yeah, I was part of the package for Workshop Two. Yeah, that's right. It was, it was in the package that was presented for Workshop Two. Um, and then your other comment was, oh, the wall. So the, the reason that we we have gone back to a panelized wall system. The reason that that was done was to minimize the uh effects on the root balls of the existing trees out there. Because the panels will will be, you know, trenched in about two or three inches below grade. And they'll just sit on the soil as opposed to needing, requiring a foundation for the whole wall. Uh, and then the little columns that will, they'll support the the panels.
And what are the lengths of the wall segments?
It's, we, you know, we were trying to figure that out. I think they're eight, they're either eight or ten feet. Marcus can answer that.
Yeah, it's 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 actually broken up into a few different lengths. I think that the the smallest panel is at three feet and the largest, I believe, is ten.
Okay. Okay, so now uh moving on to the comments, um. I, I mean, I've been out there with all the tree board walkthroughs and everything, so I, you know, I do appreciate, just like everyone else said, you know, the things that we are trying to do. Um, the first thing that I do wanna say though, and and I'm just gonna be, you know, blunt, cuz that's how I am. Um, the the drawing that shows the tree impact um mitigation, where there's red trees highlighted that's supposed to represent the trees that you guys are taking down. And I know there was a lot of discussion about invasives, which I'm well versed in that. Um, there is a lot more than the nine or so red trees that are being taken down just in front of the existing Susie Carr building. Now, if you could zoom in on that, um, even just in front of where Susie Carr currently sits. You can see that there are four other trees just on the edge of the footprint of the front line of the building there that are being taken down. That includes a legustrum, a live oak, another live oak. Um, so, and that's not the picture I'm talking about. This would be the tree uh impact mitigation. But that one will come in handy here in a second. Are you able to pull that one up with the red dots on it?
I would have to have the um developer share his screen. Um, and we would have to do it back and forth if we're gonna do something like that.
Okay, well, there's, there's a lot more trees than those nine. And I know Mandy had asked that when she had her opportunity um to speak, but there's, there is a lot more than nine trees. Um, the last count I recall and that I had confirmed with Brad uh just this week was a forty trees that were being taken down. And so that's why, you know, everyone thinks, oh, there's only these nine red ones. And then we're talk, we're discussing the Laurel Oak that's over there by the drain field area, which is what um Susan and Vicky were referring to. And a couple of the other ones that are there as well. So that, that's why that's coming up. Because there's a lot more than the nine ones that were indicated in red, which you can't see that, you know, unless you zoom in on it. Um, this wasn't provided ahead of time in 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 any way, shape or form. So again, as you know, John Q Public, we are supposed to have the opportunity to review these documents thoroughly before the meeting so that we can ask the questions that we wanna ask. And from day one, this applicant has been behind the eight ball and providing things, and then something shows up at a council meeting. And I understand that there's certain guidelines and renderings and levels that's supposed to be submitted. But it's a waste of everyone's time, both the residents and the council, when this stuff isn't provided beforehand. The only reason I was even able to see that is cuz I screenshotted it when it was up and then I zoomed in on myself cuz I knew the count wasn't right. So, that, that's very misleading. On the view that you have up now, um, you know, Susan's points about the the architect or the shape of the tree, the crown that's in the courtyard there. Yes, that courtyard is, um, actually I have the dimensions here at sixty-six point, sixty-six foot and three inch by about fifty and a half feet. And yes, that is the size of the courtyard. But you can see just on this aerial that that crown goes well beyond that footprint of that paper system that's gonna be around that tree. So with the ridge line of both buildings being twenty-four feet, not including the extra twenty-six foot of the peak of the um tower at the front of the Ace Hardware on the other end of the buil- uh other corner. There's no way you're not gonna have to limb up there. You can see the majority of that crown just from anyone looking at an aerial is over that. And I think the same thing is gonna be held true on the north side of building too. You know, you're gonna go to all this effort to protect those roots. And Vicky, um, you know, talked about the water and how, you know, the water is gonna be and if it's gonna dump off onto that. But you can clearly see those trunks abut where that building line is. Even if you jog it in two feet, you jog it in three feet, fifty percent of that canopy extends over that building that is now going to be twenty-four foot ridge line at least. I don't know what the edges are. And you know, it's my understanding that it's a gable um front to back along that building. So it's gonna have major impacts. And then all the other trees that even Stephen Withers was speaking about that are down in that corner that's gonna be located over the drain fields, they're all gone. You know, to answer the question, they're all gone. And all the trees that we are saving, they did do a great effort. I I will give them that. We saved a lot of trees, a lot of the ones that in right of way that we're referring to as saving, aren't theirs to touch. And now we're talking about limbing up the trees that are in the right of way on Fifth Avenue to accommodate trucks for a business. Not, not something that the town needs, not something that the town wants. Two of the trees that are on that end, and Brad had the photograph, and maybe it shows in there because I've looked at Google Street View and it's been a few days since I drove by there. Those are pretty small trees. Um, they're, they're not super large oaks. So depending on how much you're limbing them up to accommodate these trucks going through, it's gonna do a significant amount of that too. Um, I'm not sure who it was I spoke with, but somebody had looked up, you know, how much of a tree's canopy of a large tree can you remove before you start to do significant damage to that tree? And it's like twenty-five percent or something, I think, is what somebody told me the ISA standard was for that. So when you're talking about fifty percent of the crown being limbed up that high, that's a lot more impact to the trees that we're saving um than what's being implied here. Now, the the trees in the middle of the parking lot, you know, they did a great job with that. They've got a lot of room left for their crown as well as their water and drip line. The other thing that I wanna say is I agree with Molly Rosen though, them, um, in terms of the parking spots. You know, the whole, the whole thing about a site plan is, is you've got to pigeonhole yourself into a a a building that can work and meet all of our rules. And those rules include the drainage, the septic field. It includes the parking spots for the size of the building. If they are held to the four parking spaces per um the one thousand feet and they can't accommodate that without taking down any more trees, and I think we've made as many concessions on trees as we can, we're losing forty. Um, some of which aren't beneficial, and I agree with that. I'm I'm against invasives myself. But, you know, then maybe the building needs to scale down because I, they need to provide those parking spots. Um, I did have uh conversations with um, you know, people in town. And I, and I went over to um Dixie Cream and scoped some things out after a few of those discussions. Dixie Cream is a small restaurant. And then there's just a couple of other businesses in there. And then, you know, we have the brewery. And this is much larger scale. They have fifty parking spots approximately over there if you count up everything. Include, and I don't know who's belonged to who and what, where delineates to the church, but basically in that general vicinity. And you're talking about a, an establishment that is much, much larger. And if we allow them the three and a half or three point five per thousand feet, sixty-seven spots, i- it's just gonna be a nightmare. I mean, and and we're talking about the truck lane and people going in and out. I don't see people being able to come in off of Fifth. You know, with different trucks coming through there. And yes, the longest truck is gonna be attributed to Ace Hardware, but you have all the other ones. So I think they need to fit what our rules are. I mean, that, we love to say, oh, the design guidelines say we have to be out front. We have to do this. We have to do that. Well, our design guidelines also say, you know, the four, yes, council has it within their right and the, and it's up to them at their discretion to allow that smaller amount. But why are we going to, you know, bend and give a waiver for a business to have even less parking when we have so many issues, um, you know, in this town? So I I think that's my uh main point. My, my one other question was specifically to the arborist was the Wayne Tree System concentric rings are, you know, ate out from the base. If that's, if that is in fact the uh the number that it has to be, you can fit what, uh maybe two to three rows in there? And and the plan would be that it would go all the way to the edges of the building and that courtyard for that one tree. Is that the intent?
If Brandy, we're gonna use the uh we're gonna install the Wayne Tree Feeders based on the specs that are uh specified by Wayne Tree Feeders. And it's based on the diameter of the tree and it tells you where to put the first ring and how far to put each concentric ring. So it may go to to the bit, to the, to the full extent of the courtyard. I I, you know, uh don't have that information specifically in front of me, but it will, will follow the uh guidelines that are outlined by Wayne based on the size of the tree.
Does the Wayne Tree System make a recommendation of like what a minimum amount should be for a tree of a certain diameter at breast height size?
Generally, the Wayne, the Wayne's, if I remember my math right, it's, it's uh one unit for like every six and a half square feet of of ground area. So it's proportionate to the size of the tree, yeah.
Okay. Um, my only other concern at the very beginning was we did say that the prefab walls, depending on how they have to be installed, that they would have to be lifted with a boom into place. And around a lot of the trees by the septic field, there was a lot of concerns on the first walkthrough that if it was a prefab wall system and you're lifting it with a boom into place, again, you're gonna run into the problem depending on how they come at it of having to limb up those trees to put those panels in place unless they're able to turn them or come from a different angle or something to install them. So I don't think that pre-work's done.
We, we talked to the engineer uh who's designing the um wall system and said that they could all be installed with skid steer, which is like a bobcat. So there won't be any heavy, you know, large equipment with a boom on it.
There won't be any pruning of those trees to accommodate the fence.
Yes, that's great because that, that was one of the things on the first walkthrough that was discussed whether or not that would be required. So.
And Brandy, one more comment. I'm going to respectfully disagree with your comment about having to prune the tree in the courtyard. I measured the canopy of the tree and I've got the dimensions and the courtyard is the same size as the canopy of the tree.
I mean, I'm just looking at the aerial in front of me. So that's the only tree that's in there. And 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 the other thing is, is this not.
Other, there's other trees that over, there's other tree canopies that overlap that you're seeing on the aerial that are not gonna remain.
Thank you all. All right. We'll move to uh Daniel Floyd, please.
Thank you. Daniel Floyd, five one five Oakdale Street. Uh, you know, one of my biggest concerns is kinda echoing everyone else's sentiment, is kinda the lack of information that we've had. So you're up to this meeting, I hadn't seen any of the actual renderings and drawings of what the actual landscaping and the wall's gonna look like. And then today in the call, it's now sounding like the wall is going to be a panelized wall. So does the current rendering that we have, is that what the wall will look like? Or is it not gonna look like that? Cuz that looks like a concrete stucco wall to me.
No, they're, they're concrete, they're concrete prefabricated uh concrete panels that get slid into place and then we'll put a stucco finish on them.
Okay, so it will look similar to what we're seeing in the rendering. Okay. And then, you know, I I echoing Brad's comments about the rest of the renderings kinda not being to scale and not being able to see, get context of where you are from the packet. You know, I also had those concerns as well. You know, but my biggest concerns, being an Oakdale homeowner with a two-story home, is being directly across from the parking lot. And one of the things that I haven't seen any of is parking lot lights, the dimensions, the heights, the the type of light bulb, how many, you know, foot candles or whatever the Foot candles or whatever the the actual measurement is of how bright they will be. Anything related to, you know, light pollution and all that would be helpful to see. I haven't seen any of that in any of the drawings as well. And then. My second concern, well, actually I have three concerns now that everyone's talking about the uh propane tank. The second concern I have is the um, you know, the with the proper landscaping drawings, I would like to see. How are the trees going to block the light pollution for the residents on Oakdale? Um, I still don't have a good understanding of that based on the renderings. And I get we have the the overlay and the overview of the different trees and the different plants and the shrubbery and the landscaping, but I still don't get a good. You know, the renderings is what I was really hoping on to be getting to get a good feel and understanding of what it would look like for the residents of Oakdale to look towards. The actual project, and I still don't have a good feel for that. Um, and I guess my last question is. It seems, I I don't know if two or three people brought it up, but what is the concern um as I'm actually staring out my window and looking at exactly where that propane tank is going to be buried? Um, what are the concerns with rain and propane tank, you know, fifty feet from where I'm sitting right now?
Uh, I know there's lots of propane tanks buried in town that.
I thought so as well, but. Couple of couple of concerns that uh had me uh second guessing that one, so I don't know.
Yeah, we can find out a little bit more about that. I also want to give Brad, do you want to, so again, I understand the concerns uh in regard to the rendering piece. Um, we're going to continue to get a lot more data uh and and of course council will weigh in before we finish tonight. Uh, as to what we feel like the next step should be. Um, we have some renderings. We definitely would like some more. Uh, it's we're we're getting a little closer there in terms of being able to see what it is, but um. Brad, the next step it would, you know, once we complete the workshop process, the next step would be very, very detailed. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. Right. It would not come forward for any more hearings or anything until we had one hundred percent of all. Designed done, all the engineering done. So what you would be reviewing at the next step of this process would be the hundred percent plans. So that is correct.
But is that the best side in a workshop format? So is the public being able to provide comment in this? Do we get materials ahead of time so we can provide comment or is that just in a town council format?
It it's a it's a public hearing with the town council.
Full public hearing, full comment, and and I think. I mean, I I don't think that it I can say it any clearer that we would want all of the information well in front of the meeting. Um, and and if it's not there, we just won't move forward. So, you know, I mean, I've seen. I've been super clear and transparent on that. I I don't think that there's any room for ambiguity there.
One thing that could help me and if the applicant has a a file share, I saw a SharePoint link going around. Um, if we could, you know, get these. Pieces of data or these final renderings as we go along, we don't have to wait three months or two months for another meeting. If we could access them or they could be shared out, we can access them as they evolve, we can move this process along faster.
So it's a, you know, that that truly is up to the applicant, but we can request that we have that information and we can disseminate that information as soon as. As we have it and and I agree, I mean, if we don't have all the information, there's no point in moving forward with any more meetings, so. Um, as we we make sure we have these prior to to the meeting, you know, so we're just going to keep, keep uh. Keep working on that particular part, so everyone again has that comfort level and I again, I. I make that really clear because I think it really works in everyone's favor to have that information. I think it, you know, uh uh pictures. What a picture is worth a thousand words, right? Or two thousand words or something like that. It's worth a whole bunch. A three D rendering is probably worth five million words in this town. Um, I think we've learned that for sure and uh, you know, so uh, good stuff. All right.
Mayor, in regard to his question on light, I can provide a quick answer or information on that as well. Um, so regarding lighting of the parking lot and the light, you have very specific requirements within your code with your downtown design. To protect against those exact concerns that that he has. Um, there's limits on the height of the lights within the parking lot. And because this is adjacent to a residential area, they have to be with, you know, called full cutoff lights. They can't. They have to be shielded where the light goes down, not outwards. So there are protections within your code when they do provide the lighting plan that they'll have to meet to make sure they don't cause that light pollution.
Thank you, Brandy. Um, let's uh, let's go to Teresa Myers.
Good evening, everybody. Um, thank you for letting us speak tonight. I have quite a few questions. Um, I served as the Windermere Tree Board Chairman for fifteen years before I stepped off. Um, again, I want to go back to where is the current tree survey and tree protection overlay? There are so many trees missing. Just looking at the bird's eye view there for that are in the footprint of the buildings, the parking lots. They're not even on the current tree survey and tree protection overlay. Uh, they're not marked there. We're missing a whole lot of canopy there, guys. Where is it? Please show it to us. Um, there are so many historic oaks on that property that are forty inches DB nine above, which means they're heritage trees. One forty inch DBH, if you leave, use the tree benefits calculator and I highly encourage the engineers to become familiar. With a national tree benefits calculator. You can plug in the DBH to that tree. Uh, for instance, one forty inch live oak can handle forty eight thousand gallons of stormwater per year. Use the trees to your benefit. Think of them as giant water engineering machines because that's what they're good at. And they protect the Butler chain. Use the trees, save the trees that you can, all the trees that you can. For storm automatic mitigation and for rain gardens there in the parking lot. Use them to your advantage. Don't bulldoze them, don't grub them, keep them there, use them to handle your water, your stormwater runoff. They're amazing biological engineering machines. Use them for green engineering planning. Um. I've, you know, those oaks, some of those oaks can live five hundred years. They're not even at their halfway mark. Some of those oaks, they've got a long life to live and they can certainly do a lot of engineering for you guys in terms of water mitigation. Um, on that privacy wall, I get that you're not using the foot footers, but I think you'll get a whole lot more light, noise, sound buffering. If you use those trees and native shrubs along that Sixth Avenue perimeter and along the east perimeter on Oakdale. On my other comments, I'm most concerned with protecting what heritage trees we have on site. Will those tree protection zones be set up for all the saved trees? Not just the big guys, said at a minimum, will be at the tree drip line. You know, the art, the landscape architect keeps using the 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 term root ball. It's not a root ball, it's a tree protection zone at minimum. It's an invisible line where the drip line of the tree branches end. That's your TPZ, your tree protection zone, not a root ball. It's a whole protection zone that ends at the drip line and every one of those trees should have a tree protection plan for protecting them. Um, and and so that you're you're saving them at a minimum and um and and not impacting those roots. Grade changes can be devastating to trees and your ISA arborist knows this. Even if the change is not severe because of grade changes, they tend to cut or damage roots, compact soil and alter patterns of water movement. So the most important consideration is the amount of root system that remain after grading. Will the roots be cut cleanly using radial trenching and sharp pruning tools instead of ripping them out with excavating equipment? We've had that happen over and over and over again at the town hall when we did the pavers at town hall. And now with this and for uh the other building over there in the town square and we. I'd like to see in uh will an air excavation radial trenching device be used to remove soil around the roots before cutting those roots? With a saw or lopper so we can see where the tree protection zone is. To um to reduce tree stress before cutting those roots or pruning those branches, especially during heat conditions. Will the trees be irrigated prior to cutting roots or pruning branches? If the roots must be severed or root pruned, please consider cutting them while the trees are dormant. Okay, these are all ISA basic guidelines, all of these. Um. International Society of Arboriculture, look it up. Landscape architect, I would be advise you to become familiar with the ISA. Um, Arborist Handbook, where all this is covered. Will you be creating an actual tree protection um plan and landscape plan that utilizes the actual existing tree canopy? Against the proposed building site. I'm looking at this picture right here with this oak in front of the building. I don't know where you got that tree, but that's not what's in front of the building. I'd like to see an actual three D rendering with the actual trees up against the actual landscape plan. Um, so we can see fly a drone around this place and let's let's see some three D renderings that will give us the actual tree canopy. North, south, east and west and in a bird's eye view. It's not that hard to do. Uh, conceptual site plan does not show this. It's a computer graphic rendering that does nothing to show us. How much canopy is lost, what it's going to look like when you're done. Um, I do not want to see a two-story building on the corner of Sixth and Main where the roundabout is. That will be, that will be requiring the elimination of much of the tree canopy on that here. On those heritage oaks around that two-story building. Um. We got to protect the tree canopy better. Um. Can the landscape architecture engineers come up with a better plan to utilize the existing trees for what they do best? Again. As they absorb enormous amounts of water, can you create a better green engineering plan, utilizing the tree and their root systems to do what they do best? Stormwater mitigation. Kudos on the water permeable pavers. That's awesome. That's awesome to see that. Um, that will allow water to the roots of the trees and allow the um water to percolate down. Um, we're in a critical water recharge area, the Butler Chain of Lakes, which is the headwaters to Shingle Creek and the Everglades. So allowing that water to permeate down to the roots and um not flow into the Butler Chain of Lakes is going to be a huge. Um. Lesser impact for stormwater going into the Butler Chain. So great job on the water permeable pavers like that. Um, I can't say enough that this plan is just devastating to the tree canopy in this in this area. You've, we got to come up with a better plan, guys. Um, lower, lower the heights, help us do better. I'm not, I just see a whole lot of pavement, a whole lot of asphalt. Again, asphalt puts in PCPs. And uh hydrocarbons into the Butler Chain. I don't want to see any asphalt. That's a bad idea for parking. Um, I would, I would encourage you to use those permeable pavers throughout the parking lot instead of asphalt renderings that I see there. I'm hoping that's not what's going to go in there. Um, asphalt has really nasty PCPs and um really nasty chemicals that go right in the Butler Chain with all that stormwater. Um, grease trap, where's the grease trap for this proposed restaurant? Every restaurant has to have a grease trap underground. Um, I understand you're going into underground septic. The impacts to the septic. Um, right in a critical water recharge area, which is the Butler Chain. Um, you're talking some serious impacts with the septic and the gre- grease traps from that restaurant. And that's really not being um addressed.
Susan, we're not at that stage of the plans to address um the where the grease trap locations are and stuff. We will get there.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm bringing them up. They're not.
Okay. Um. And I also don't believe there's any pavement involved here either.
Okay, well, the the renderings show asphalt, so.
I I.
Show us what it is.
A rendering is a rendering. We've talked about them tonight, so okay.
And my name's Teresa.
All right.
Jim, can I address some of those?
Yeah, let's let's uh, let's do it in in a minimal amount of time if we can, but certainly, please do.
Yes, sir. I haven't had dinner yet and I'd love to eat. Um. Yes, Teresa, you got some good concerns. Um, we are going to put tree barricades up. We are going to root prune. Uh, with a root root uh tree root pruning machine prior to working around any of the trees. Yes, we are going to use an air spade. To locate the roots. Uh, just as we did at the town center with the last year uh that John referred to earlier. Uh, yes, you're correct. It's not a uh, the the root ball was an improper term and I thought of that when the gentleman was talking about it, but we are going to. Use an air spade around the entire root plate area there where we will locate those uh. Those pilings in between the tree roots and uh minimize whatever tree roots have to be have to be cut. Uh, regarding your forty inch heritage trees, you are correct. There are eight trees forty inches and above on the site. Seven are going to remain, only one is going to be removed. Uh, and as far as the trees around the building that you were concerned with on the corner. Two twenty nine inch live oaks are being removed. Uh, it's not any heritage trees that are forty inches.
So what kind of mitigation are you guys putting in place? I mean, you can't put in two and three inch diameter trees and expect to do water mitigation for what those big oaks do now. Stormwater mitigation or carbon sequestration.
I'm not the landscape architect. That's not in my wheelhouse there.
All right.
That's a question for someone else.
And and I don't think we have all those answers yet. That is, again, there there are some things that we can ask for at this game stage and there are some things that we do have to wait for. As they are engineered and we can actually have answers. Otherwise, we're speculating and uh and guessing on that. We will have that opportunity. Thank you. I appreciate it, Teresa. There was a couple of questions I saw in the chat. Pam, I see your hand up. Did you want to comment?
Yes, um, I actually have a question because um I have walked, my name is. I'm at twelve Oakdale and I am on the tree board. I have walked the property quite a lot. Um, the renderings of. The like I can tell doesn't really look like anything that would actually be there. Um, there are just uh, Teresa mentioned a stock photo. That that tree is not the tree that's there. It doesn't look anything like that. Um, along the, when the, looking at the walls, the the bushes and the shrubs and the trees that are put in, they don't look anything like what's actually there. We're not going to have um blue flowers all the time, so would it be possible? Because you are so right. The picture is worth a thousand words or many more. If we get asked the person who's doing them to. Accurately reflect what is there and what's going to be there. And I understand we're going to lose a lot of um foliage. We are trying to do as best we can, but we do need to show our citizens how it really is going to look. Once the wall gets put up and the landscaping gets put in, but do you notice like the little blue flowers? They're not going to be there because we're not going to put a lot of stuff under the trees because that will disrupt the trees. That's my comment.
Thank you, Pam. And I think that um, I I think that everyone has heard. Uh, the request for more detailed renderings of loud and clear, and I think that's certainly a fair ask. Um, it may not. Thank you, and I totally agree. All right, there were a couple um. A couple of things in the comments that, so Karen Fay had a quick question and she did not speak, so I want to make sure that we try to answer her question. Um, she said, well done. Um, I know a lot more after these workshops. But I think she was concerned, she's, so her question was, why are we utilizing a wall rather than a berm? Um, and what is the setback? Brad, is that something that you want to address?
Yeah, I can, I can help that. Yeah, so the wall is part of your design standards. It calls for a screen wall with landscaping. Um, so that's why there's the wall there because that is part of that with the with the landscaping there on the outside. Um, doesn't mean there couldn't be a berm with it, um, but that is what what is required. Um, that's why that is. Um, and on the setback, I think we kind of on on Sixth, Mayor, was it where she was asking?
I think she was curious mostly about Sixth, yes.
On Sixth, so.
We'll set back at the building on Sixth Avenue. Um, I think you gave us a number earlier.
Yeah, it was seventeen from the corner of the building um there by the roundabout to the pavement of the roundabout.
Mm-hmm.
Approximately there, um. Off of Six to the property line, it appears they're about ten feet off of the sixth property line. But let me, let me see if I can measure that real quick while we're talking. And Marcus, if you can answer that without me measuring.
Um, let me see. There's one off of there. Yeah, I'm I'm like getting about ten, ten feet off of the the property line.
Right.
Um. Code code requirement calls out um ten feet from a back of curb, which which puts a setback in there uh right away.
Right. And that's that's what I get as well, Mayor. So that is correct.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that, guys. Um, I also saw from Deborah Neal, she said that she hopes that we will have another. Uh, workshop to address some of the unresolved questions at this point. Um, and then there are a few comments that address the. Fact that this is an improvement from the collapsing houses and the green fence that are currently there. Um, and I think that's Karen saying, thanks for getting that one thing uh responded to, and I think, you know, uh, I think there's some. Maybe we can do, uh, there's. And I think, you know, uh, I think there's some, maybe we can do, uh, there's quite a few comments on the corner piece there. I'm not gonna call it a tower, but with the cap. Um, and I think they kind of mirror um the Withers' comments, so I, I think everyone has heard that as well and everyone working on the, the building has heard that as well. Um, tree. I think we have had good conversation on the tree and the need for some further clarification there. All right, does any, I see, John, do you have a comment, sir?
Yeah, I just um, as a uh kind of ending comment, so I was waiting for all the comments. And I think it's important for the council to understand, you know, having been in this town for a long period of time and going through the 2020 vision plan with Canaan, you know, we established what I would refer to as the sandbox and always wanted people to play in the sandbox and design things that are appropriate for our town. And I think this developer has done a very, very, very good job of um wanting to play in that sandbox. And I think it's important for the council to understand that we set up design guidelines. We set up code enforcement, we set up tree mitigation, we set up all these things for you guys to make decisions appropriately so that we could say, "Hey, this is what the community wanted to do fifteen years ago when we developed the design guidelines." And so here we are on the precipice of this to have a design and you guys have code. You guys have an arborist, you guys have a developer that wants to listen to our design guidelines. And you have Wade Trim with Brad and everybody else that everything that we're doing is within the confines of the sandbox that we've developed. And that was all public input fifteen years ago. And so, you know, there may be people that weren't involved in that and there may be people that don't like what we set up, but at the end of the day, this is, this is the precipice in which you guys have to make a decision based on what we set up and what we wanted for the vision for our town, for our 2020 vision plan. And so I would encourage the town council and everybody else to go back to what we as people set up through vignettes and everything else to determine what we wanted and allow the developer to develop his property in the way in which we set up the sandbox for him to develop. And they've been amazing for us. And I want to give V3, Jim Carr and everybody a shout out to you guys and to the town because they're listening and they're changing and they're modifying. They're saving trees, they're doing everything they can. And I think it's important for you guys to take that into consideration when you vote. And, you know, everybody has a right to develop their property. We set up the sandbox and so I, I just want to encourage you guys to go back, look at those things and make sure that we're doing the right thing, but also doing the right thing for not only the town, but also the right thing for somebody that has the rights to develop their property.
Thank you, John. Appreciate your input there and I think that uh, you know, I think that we've been, we've been partnered up pretty well this, through this whole process. Um, you know, and I, I think we have talked about this is a, this is a way to get where everyone will feel like um, everyone was heard and, and everyone has some input into what is going to be there, what it will look like and what the future of our commercial district looks like. So, um, you know, couldn't agree more, but uh, we also want to make sure that we, we check every box. And we do have, thank goodness that we did all that work previously, so we have, we have good, um, we have a good blueprint, good perimeter locations to, to play in. You know, it takes, it takes a million questions off the, uh, off the chart because we have those designing guideline standards, so kudos to everybody that put the hard work in, in, on that, so. Um, council, I'm gonna.
I would like to make the comment that if we didn't have these design guidelines, we would not be here tonight to be able to articulate to the developers and those that own the rights to develop the land to have these conversations to keep them within the sandbox, right? And so kudos to the town to have a vision plan and so I thank you guys for that.
Absolutely, and I think that it works and I think we've proven several times now that, you know, we do, we, it may take us a little bit, but we can get there and we can do something that people are, are proud of when we get there, so. Um, what I want to do at this juncture is steer it back to council. Of course, this is a workshop, so there is no vote on anything this evening. I think what I'm looking for from council, though, is on direction to staff as to whether with, with some uh questions to potentially be addressed in the interim. Are we, uh, does council feel like they're ready to um move to a council meeting? Or are they desiring to move towards an additional workshop? Councilperson David.
Mayor, I just have a quick question. So the next step in this, if we were to vote to go forward or, you know, move staff to approve to go forward, is the hundred percent design review? Is that a true statement?
Uh, that is correct, Councilmember David. They would move forward with the full design and that's what would then come before you through a public hearing process.
Okay, so that's two meetings, um, two, two meetings at a minimum for uh, for the hearing. Sorry, Tony, go ahead.
No, that was, I, I would propose that we then, you know, have an intermediate step to review the, the true design drawings before they get to a hundred percent.
Okay, so um, so just for interpretation purposes, you're leading towards moving forward um with direction to staff to go to the next step, not a, not a workshop, right? Is that correct, John?
Um, well, if the next step is a thirty percent or sixty percent design review in a workshop, that's fine. Um, but I do think we need an intermediate step before we get complete design drawings on, on this project.
Understood, okay. Councilperson Rose.
Yeah, um, I don't know exactly how the process would work, but um, since we're not voting, but I, I for one am not going to approve something that doesn't give us at least four spaces per thousand square feet. If, if we all feel that way or if enough of us feel that way, is it worth them proceeding with this design? Uh.
I mean, I think, uh, my, Councilperson Rose, I think that it's the totally right thing to do to kind of say, we're not, like you say, we're not gonna vote, but you can certainly stress the importance of that is going to be an important criteria for you and, and potentially other members of the council.
Okay, thanks. That's how I feel.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. It's always good. We'd, I, I think everybody'd rather know, so that's helpful. Um, uh, Councilperson David.
I'm, I'm comfortable with um, yeah, moving forward. I'm with, I'm with Rose on um, you know, the parking. I'm a little concerned because of, you know, some of the, the venues that are going in there, like Ace Hardware. I go to Ace, I, in Winter Garden, I know how the traffic is, I know how the parking is. Um, I'm concerned that it's gonna bring in a lot of traffic, so that and just please, please be as transparent as possible with those um slides and, and renderings that you have because that helps us make a informed decision and it helps the public know what they're also gonna be receiving as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson David. Any additional council input? Councilperson Martini, you just popped up to the top of the hand up.
Um, uh, uh, I'm also not comfortable going to the hundred percent. I know that the developer's gonna move forward with their plans and I think they should. Uh, but I, like council, Councilman uh David said, I do, I do think we need an interim view at this. The very first workshop we had, the information was incomplete and in my mind, uh insufficient to actually have a workshop. And that pattern has continued since this project started, so, and it, and it, um, you know, it occurred again this evening. So, in my mind, this is like our two and a half workshop because unfortunately, these, you know, the, the applicant's been a step or two behind every workshop that we've had. And I understand that, you know, they don't want to spend a lot of money if they don't think it's going forward. And like John said, this property is gonna get developed and we're fortunate to have a developer who, who um, who is from this town and does care about the trees and it is a compromise. And we have, they have worked with us, they have compromised. Uh, we, and I think we started off with like three trees remaining on the site and now we've got thirty plus. So kudos to them for that and also to the tree board. And um, you know, all the, all the arborists and, and everybody and, and, you know, we're lucky to have people like Eric involved because he knows what we need as far as um, you know, the trees go. He knows how we feel about the trees because he's, he's been through this with the town facilities. However, I do think we need uh for comfort of this, the residents and also to make sure that there's no misunderstandings either for the residents or the developers or the council that we have uh, that we squeeze in an interim to, to maybe even just look and see where they're going with the direction. Uh, you know, obviously this property is gonna get developed, but there's a comfort level that I don't think we're at right now across the board.
Okay.
That's my ten cents.
Fair enough. Um, Councilperson Williams, any um thoughts or comments from, from your perspective?
Um, I'm, I'm with everybody else on uh the lack of detail a lot of the ways. Um, and I'm, you know, gonna stay involved in the discussion, but as you know, that I abstain when it comes down to the voting on this project.
Okay.
As I have in the past.
Yep, well, and, and appreciate your candor there, sir. So I'll, I'll direct this to Robert and Brad and possibly John. Um, from a recommendation standpoint, do we go to an additional workshop in the very near future? Do we, is there an interim step that we could engage that is at a higher level than that? Or, or those are, is, is a workshop our option?
Well, the, the ultimate goal of the developers to get the plans approved.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, if they want to move forward with something that council is still uncomfortable with, with the amount of detail that's been provided, um, you know, that may be their decision. Um, you know, whether that, not that's a great decision or not, you know, that's gonna be up to them um as a business decision, but um, you know, we'll work with the developer, we'll work with uh Brad on figuring out what the next steps are. Um, but I'll defer to Brad on that and also V3.
Okay. Brad, let me, let me hear from you and then we'll go up to V3.
Sure, yeah, I mean, what I have, and I will say, you know, I have advised them along the way, the executives have said, Mayor, the more information, the better it is for these workshops. Um, so I, you know, I do think it is beneficial for potentially for y'all to have another workshop with more, with more of the engineering fleshed out. I know, I know, like I, I know they're working through it, so they're not at thirty percent. Um, they're probably somewhere between sixty and ninety would be my guess. I don't know that, but moving forward. So I think it would be beneficial to have, to answer more of the specific questions, you know, about some of the civil issues about the stormwater um, and those kinds of things that we really haven't talked about, other than briefly at the very first workshop at the thirty percent design. Um, but as Robert said, ultimately, and this is what I say to the applicant, it's up to them if they want to move forward, knowing the risks. That's what they, that's what we'll do.
Well, and I think that, and thank you, Brad, and, and, and I think that, and thank you um, Robert as well. And I, I think I can speak for council here and they can stop me if I'm not speaking for them, but, but we, we're here to make certain that what goes on that corner works for as many people as possible and works for the town for the long haul. We're certainly in this for, for the right reasons, the right progress and the right project. And I, you know, what I would ask you guys to make sure that you do is to go ahead and take, take a little risk on us and bring as much as you can. Um, and I think that, you know, what you heard tonight was pretty clear in terms of what that, that might look like. I mean, I think I would invest in some actual real renderings that, that, that match up to scale and match up to the other buildings and match up to some different views and um advantages. Um, I think I would look at, you know, some of the um, what the, what the drainage may look like, what, what a restaurant drainage system may look like. Uh, wrap up and make sure that we have all the i's dotted and t's crossed on the, on the tree plan and mitigation strategies. Um, and take another look at parking. And I know that's a, that's not a small ask, but I think that, I think it's gonna be important. So um with that, I'll, I'll let Tony speak, Tony David, Councilperson David speak, and then we'll go right to V3.
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to address what, what Brad just said, you know, he's, he, he says that the developers at sixty to ninety percent development documents, you know, what I ask is show us. I mean, what, what they showed tonight is nowhere near that level of detail and a design. Um, you know, how can we make decisions without seeing the full amount of developed documentation and planning for this project? So, you know, I ask that we, we have another workshop to do just that. Show us what you've developed. You know, show us the full, full level of development to this point and give us the opportunity to evaluate that to, before we move forward on this very critical step in the town, the downtown areas development. Thanks.
No, and I, and I totally agree. I think it's well said and, and you know, and, and for everyone that's here participating here, I mean, you know, I, I know it's a little different. It's very personable and it can be personal sometimes as well. So, but, you know, I don't know how many places you guys go and, and see fifty or sixty people hang out on a three-hour uh virtual Zoom workshop to, you know, kind of make sure that what goes into their town is something that works for everybody, so. Um, I'll let you guys uh respond and then we'll close out from there.
So um, I just wanted to respond and really it's, it's back to the preliminary development plan that we're functioning under right now. Um, the next step after the three um workshops was to move to what's called the, the final development plans, which is an actual, it's FDBP and it's, it's labeled as a step in our process here. Um, and that's uh, the final plans for the project shall be prepared for review and approval by the town's development review board and town council as required by the town code, notwithstanding any part of PDP to the contrary, shall be subject to the following conditions, which are the conditions that we've all been uh functioning under. So wha- what I would like to propose is, we call it a workshop, you can call it, you know, an interim, interim planning step, whatever, but I want to move to that final development plan stage where, and we have sixty, we probably have more than sixty percent drawings right now on the project. Um, what we need to do and what I will, will commit is that we will incorporate the uh 3D renderings, which aren't part of that. Um, the sixty percent set of drawings are engineering drawings. And, and you know, that, that not necessarily would, would require uh 3D plans, but we will incorporate the reviews that have come up tonight to flesh out those um uh renderings a little bit more to give people a little more perspective. Um, but, and, and we will submit the, the sixty percent set of drawings for this next meeting, but I would like to call it this, this, you know, development review board meeting or, or whatever we need to call it, um, so that I can get approval from the owners to move on and provide those drawings. That's one of the things is we're, you know, V3 is the developer, we're not the owner. And we have to go to Jim and, and his partners and let them know where we are in this process. And what I want to be able to do is say, we have an interim step, we re, we've met the, the three um requirements of the, of the workshops. We have some things that we need to do still and we're willing to do those, uh, but we need to move towards this final development plan set. Um, so that would be my request.
So I think that what I'm hearing from council is they are not ready to go to that step. We can call it whatever we will, um, but I think basically at the end, at the end of the day, what we're looking for is that interim step. We're gonna call it a workshop. Um, you know, it, that, that's what, that's my recommendation. Um, I didn't just start doing this yesterday, so, you know, I mean, if you want to, if you want to proceed to the next level, um, you know, then that's a, that's a risk that you guys would have to be willing. you know, then that's a, that's a risk that you guys would have to be willing to take. Um, you, you know, I, again, I, I'm just going on my gut and trying to, uh, make sure we facilitate the, the process through the, the best channels necessary and, and follow our ordinances and codes as well. Um, but I would, I would bring those things that we talked about personally. I would bring those things that we talked about. Bring them to an interim meeting. It can be in two weeks. It can be in three weeks, whatever you guys have it ready. Um, you know, the residents will be ready, we'll be ready and then we can proceed forward from there.
Mayor, can I interject as the liaison for the development review board?
Certainly, sir.
I, I am fairly certain that this would not move forward through the DRB in the condition that it's in currently. And, um, I'm sure Brad, Brad may agree, may not, but based on the, you know, level of, uh, discomfort that the residents have and the council, I, I don't think this would pass through DRB. So I think it would be, uh, ill-advised to jump forward to that, to that step in this process.
Thank you, Councilperson Martini. I appreciate the input for sure. Yeah, I mean, I think that just mirrors what, what I'm saying. You know, council's pretty clear here. Uh, again, it, it's just a, it's just a, a poll of a workshop and, and their feelings and directions to staff. Um, I think those will be our directions, uh, to staff and, and we can look at the options from there. Uh, but, uh, I think everybody's been pretty clear and, you know, I, I don't think we're, I don't think we're miles apart. Uh, you know, I, I think we're pretty close. That's why I would want to, I would want to do whatever we can do to make this work. Um, and, and get us over this next hump. You know, sometimes it's a little hard work, but I think we can get there. Anything further? All right, seeing nothing else, uh, for the good of the order, Robert, do you have anything you want to add? Brad?
Yes, sir.
Well, sir, I appreciate all the comments. Thank you.
A, a, as do I. I appreciate everyone's input and, uh, spending, spending some quality time with us over the past couple of nights. Um, and, uh, if there is nothing else for the good of the order, we will adjourn at eight thirty-two. Thank you all.
Nine thirty-two.
Sorry, nine thirty-two, different time zone. I apologize.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.